This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our Commissioners Meeting. I'm glad to see that people that look like they traveled here may be here safely because of quite the winery day that we had yesterday. We're going to be shuffling some stuff around on the agenda today just because we have one Commissioner who won't be here until later. We have one that won't be joining us, and so we will be making some changes. All items on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioner Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. All public comment... Let me see here. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation, and this is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I will call this meeting to order. And Jared, would you leave some switch?
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. All right, Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15:00 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll move into Commissioners' Reports on Meetings, Conferences, and Seminars Attended. Jared, we'll start with you.
Okay, I went to the livestock board the other day. Really didn't do a whole lot. But we was wanting to get a sign for all the high school kids that made the finals and stuff. Do that on the agenda. And like they got one that was donated for the rodeo finals.
Right. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Kathy, anything?
Yes, I have a couple. The first one would be Lexi. Attended their regular scheduled meeting on Monday, today, Thursday, Tuesday. And they were just getting their stuff ready for putting on for the budget. And this year they have to have an actual reenactment. It can't be one that's on roundtable or circ. And so that's something that they'll be planning and probably reaching out to people for things for. So just a heads up that that will be going on.
How often do they do those?
They do them every year, but most of the time they have... They can do a roundtable one, but I think it's every other year. Brandy is at every other year. They have to do an actual live one. And the year before last, they did it, the one at Austin. And then the TV board, just the regular things, obviously, not a lot they could be doing. But everything, all of our equipment has been moved into the Eureka Building, this big semac building they have up there. I say big, and it's big for a heat for our antenna equipment. And so that has all been moved into there. So if we lose stations and things like that, because we do have new antennas, it would be from the, you know, 69-hour winds that are blowing antennas around in circles. Other than that, all that equipment has been moved into those buildings. So just a heads up on that stuff, too.
Well, thank you. I have no report. We'll move into Staff Reports on Meetings, Conferences, and Seminars Attended.
Commissioner, I think that we have Commissioner Chop online. I'm not sure he can hear us, but I'm not sure if he has a report that he'd like to...
Okay, Mike, can you hear us? Mike?
If you can't hear us, you might have to unmute your phone. He is texting me right now.
He's texting you, okay.
Let me try to unmute.
So he'll be...
Ask him again.
Mike, do you have any reports on conferences or seminars, meetings?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
We had the hospital board last night. We did approve the contract of mental health position. And basically, we need the construction with the nice weather. Not in part up where they thought they should be. And so CJ Jason Blake's contract, it'll be... First notice that needs to be modified on it, so he doesn't ratify.
Okay, you were very, very muffled, but I gathered that you guys had some communication on mental health at the hospital, and there's going to be further discussion on it later?
Yeah, let me see if I can take it to my phone. Can I better get the... Okay, is that better?
Oh, yeah, way better.
Okay, I'll just work off my phone then.
Give me a minute.
Yeah, we approved that contract for the doctor, and Jason's contract needs some modifications, and then it'll be approved. That was about it, construction update.
All right, well, thank you, Mike.
Muted, unmuted.
All right, so we'll move into Staff Reports on Meetings, Conferences, and Seminars Attended.
Good morning, Commissioner. So for Battle Mountain Hydro and Hughes Energy, I believe that that's been kind of something you guys wanted updated on. But we don't really have any updates because they still have not finished vetting all of our questions that we've asked. So we have some more questions that need answered. They did give us some real rough overdraft answers on them questions, but never got into detail on them. So we want some more detail, and we have our attorney going through that with them and their attorney to make sure that we, you know, get some of the safety concerns and the things that would be important to us answered, as well as the lease agreement kind of put together to bring back before this Commission, before we give them the, you know, the green light to go ahead and start building. That'll all come back before you guys, before that happens, because we have not got that set up yet. So that's kind of the Battle Mountain Hydro and the Hughes Energy. Is it still on standstill until we have some more?
So do we have them giving them a timeframe when to get this stuff in to us? Or is it as they give it? And I'm not being sarcastic, what I'm saying is just... So, I mean, they were in such a big hurry to get moving so quickly. So now we would need this stuff from them. Do we have a timeframe of when they're going to have, you know, that stuff to us that we would like?
No, we have not put them on any deadlines. I think that they were the ones that were in the rush, but we don't want them to push us into a bad spot by rushing it. So I think they're a little bit frustrated with some of our continued questioning, but we need hard answers, so...
Exactly, that's still due diligence, so very good.
Yep. And then on the land transfer for our public lands. So this is going to come back in front of this Commission as well, because as we start reading into the land bill, the expense of the surveys that are... That we have to do on these lands are going to be pretty extensive. And one of the problems that I see with the four-surface lands, especially down in Austin, is the difference between the BLM is they got the RMPP, which is Recreation Public Purpose, so we can use that for public purpose recreation. And then if we ever wanted to purchase that land, we purchase it at fair market value, and then we can start, you know, doing like we did with the golf course. The issue with some of the four-service land down there is they won't allow you to then later purchase land and use it as your own. So it's almost like taking over all the responsibility and the liability with no later benefit. So that's going to come back before you guys as well, because I'm not sure if we want to sign on that line and really get that going, knowing that there is no benefit to us, that this is solely taking on additional responsibility that we may not want liability. The BLM side of it is it's going to be pretty extensive on the surveying expenses. So I'll come back with some hard numbers for you guys on the surveying expenses. And then we also might want to get with the convention and tourism on the land that they want and see if they want to front the money for the survey costs on the land that they want, because I know there's a significant amount of land there. So them are the things that we're working on right now. Everything else should be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Bert. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment? Okay. We'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. One, approval of January 11th, 2024 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of December 14th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And three, approval of payroll change requests.
So we didn't get number two, right?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve number one and three.
Okay, so we have a motion? Is Mike, is he attending? So will he be voting? All right, or it's in the background of your vote on the two. There we go.
That's better.
I was asking, is he just... Can you text him, Bert, just see if he's observing, or will he be voting? Okay, we'll move into item one for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. We're going to pull checks number 222346 and 222220.
All right, aside from those two bills, I make a motion that we pay the remaining bills.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve check number 222346, 222220.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain from those payments because they're made to my employer. You're good?
Yep.
Okay. Two, Commissioners for possible action to elect a Chairman and Vice Chairman to the Lander County Board of Commissioners for the 2024 calendar year pursuant to NRS 244.070.
So I'll make a motion to have Brian left as Chair and Jared as Vice Chair, but if I'm the only one here to vote, can they vote for themselves? Or do we have to wait till we have more people here, or what do we do on that?
Well, we can...
I was just thinking that Mike, don't you think it'd be better to wait until Dave's here?
Yeah, or we could ask Mike, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By legally, you can vote for yourself on this.
You can, yeah. Oh, okay, so then I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion? Is there a second? Okay, so a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Okay, three, we're going to skip over that until Dee is here. We're going to move into item four for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Backflow Prevention and Cross-Connection Control Plan.
Hello, Don. Good morning, Commissioner. I believe you guys have this in your backup?
Yeah.
This started quite a while back, according to my understanding. The state wants this done. It's a... Basically backflow, so there's no contamination coming back into our water system and contaminating the whole system. And if you look at it, the way the wording was put, it's a... We may have to shut your water off and stuff like that. There's no definite saying we will shut you off, because in the past year or so, we've been working on make... But don't have backflow. We've been trying to get them put in and all this other stuff. We've been working on this, so... Basically, and the state required so much to be put in this, and so we went through it and got everything in it they wanted in it, but we basically put it into our works.
So what is it? Is it like valving you're putting in place where if there is any cross-contamination, you can switch?
Backflows, yes. So it'll stop it from cross-contamination. And some, like even our new meters have double-check valves in them that stop it from coming back into the system.
So it's a safety aspect?
Yes, it's a safety, yes. I actually got one guy going to a class here in a week or so to get certified on that list, too.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Do we need a motion on that one?
Yeah.
Need a motion? Because it doesn't have any price or anything with that? How does that work?
It's just a control plan.
Okay, so just accept the...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We accept the presentation as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Before we go, something to do with roads. We'll put... Can I do that under public comment? I don't know, do I wish to stay under public comment?
Let's just wait until public comment.
Okay.
Commissioner... Commissioner Sparks, can we skip to item 14? Yeah, you read my line. That's what this is going to do, so I'll make a note here, so I don't let you forget that.
Okay.
And then we're going to move 14 up for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the UNR Lander County Extension Program Highlights and Reorganization of the Extension Model Presentation and Radon Proclamation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Am I okay here, sound wise? Great, great. Hello, Holly Gasky for the record with UNR Extension. I'm just going to pull up a quick presentation to give you some background. Would you like to do the radon proclamation first?
However you'd like. It's entirely up to you. We're fine with either.
I'll do it first legally on that.
Yes.
You probably should read it in first. Somebody should.
I didn't bring a copy with me. That's my bad. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, right there.
It's in the packet, okay.
It is a little long jump up here.
It is long. And you're going to make me say those difficult words. I was hoping to leave it to you. Thank you, perfect, thank you. And this I need, it's always on. Okay, okay. So whereas the great state of Nevada, known for its natural beauty and diverse landscape, is home to a unique geological feature and abundance of surface uranium, making it the leading state in the United States with this natural resource. And whereas uranium is harnessed for various beneficial uses, including nuclear energy production, medical applications, and scientific research. Whereas it is crucial to recognize that while uranium has beneficial application, it also poses dangers when naturally breaks down into radon gas, a colorless, orderless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that can endanger the health and well-being of our residents. Whereas radon gas occurs naturally when uranium breaks down, silently seeping into the homes of our residents. Whereas it has come to our attention that many Nevada residents remain unaware of hidden danger lurking within their homes known as radon, a colorless, orderless, naturally occurring radioactive gas, which stands as the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second-leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. Whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates that approximately 21,000 people in the United States tragically lose their lives each year due to lung cancer caused by indoor radon gas exposure. Astonishingly, lung and bronchitis cancer reclaim more lives each year than any other form of cancer. Whereas lung cancer impacting more women than breast cancer poses a higher risk to Nevadans compared to the national average. Whereas it is a fact that one in our four homes in Nevada contains elevated levels of radon. Remarkably, any home in Nevada could harbor elevated radon levels even when neighboring homes do not. Living in a home with an average radon level of four picocures per liter of air poses a risk compared to smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. Whereas it is the right of homeowners to know the radon level of any home when they consider purchasing. Whereas the importance of radon testing cannot be overstated, as it is the sole means to determine whether a home contains elevated radon levels. This testing is not only easy and free, but it also opens the door to potential mitigation efforts that would make the home safer. Whereas the University of Nevada Reno Extension's Nevada Radon Education Program and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency stand firmly in support of initiatives aimed at motivating all Nevada residents to act by testing their homes for radon, mitigating elevated radon levels, and promoting new construction with radon-reducing materials and features. Now, does that... Do I say that part, or do they say that part? Go ahead, keep going. Now, therefore, the board-elected official organization hereby proclaim January 2024 as National Radon Action Month in Nevada, adopted this 11th day of January 2024.
Thank you. And Commission, we will need two motions. We'll need one for that and then one for... Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the... As presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you amend that and add the number 2024-01 for the number?
Do you want to make your motion? What was the number?
2024-01.
Okay, I'll amend the motion. The motion to include the 2024-01 to the...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, moving on.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to just give you a brief update of what has happened in the last year for Lander Extension activities, and then I'm going to be talking to you about reorganization that we're looking at doing. As you know, we've been looking at trying to improve our system in looking at what kind of employees we can fill, keep on the ground, doing program better, especially at the Extension Educator level, so that's what this will entail. And I'll try to keep it on task. So as you can see, we've got a great group of kids on the 4H thing on the first slide there. And that's a lot of what we do in Extension. So I'm going to give you a quick background. Extension's been running in Nevada for nearly 150 years. And I'm giving you this background right now because it'll become relevant in where we're going for reorganizing. But I just wanted to remind you that we are required to cover six areas: natural resources, horticulture, agriculture, health, community and economic development, youth and family development, according to state law. And we bring in research and science-based things from the university and educate the public on the ground. We're kind of the public's university, as we kind of call it once in a while. But we cover those six areas. So we go into communities, we assess what's going on, and how we can collaborate with others. We're very much into partnership and making things happen to the best of our ability with our lean main team. So to give you what we've done in the last year, we had impacted 60 youths through clubs and family programs. We had 11 volunteers that connected. Andrew is the one that's keeping the office going here, and he's rebuilding and building things up, and will continue doing that. He's got relationships with many different groups, including the school district, in doing this. And in the last year, he added a small animal club. That makes it more convenient for those that don't have access to livestock and things like that to be able to come in. So they now have three clubs, kind of splitting up that care of animals into different categories. The other group that they've got is the Cloverbuds, the theater and art clubs. Those are clubs that are... We're seeing new members be attracted to. And so we're... He's working and creating plans to figure out how to reach the youth and let them know we have programs available for them. And I ask anybody else in the group to let them know 4H is here, it's growing. We reach youth in all kinds of shapes and forms. He ran for the second year a summer challenge, which was basically engaging youth in multiple activities and giving them a challenge to engage in those different things. And we don't require youth to sign up for that, so they jump in and they feel and get an exposure to 4H and gives them something to do that's positive and healthy for those groups. And you can see a couple of pictures of the different diverse groups, the photography, and different activities that we have the youth out doing and doing. Other extension programs we're doing, as we just approved the radon proclamation, the kit... Our office has free radon kits available this month and next month. And please encourage people to drop by and get that. If they want more information about radon, they can... The best way to get at our website is to Google it. So go UNR Extension Radon, and you will get... Come to the page that tells you how to get the kits, how to use the kits, and more importantly, how you can mitigate and make your home safe. So that is information that's valuable there. And it's available all year round, but for the next two months, you get free kits. So please stop by our Extension office to get that. The other thing that we do is we definitely partner in the community, Conservation District, and multiple other groups, as you can see there, and look at how to support public in health and safety, substance abuse education, weed abatement, wildlife enhancement projects, public recreation, and many other different things that we'll wander into and partner with to make happen. And in fact, NACO is one of those, and you'll hear more about that later. The large... Andrew had a role in working on that, getting that Nori grant to improve the high school duck pond. It gives you one example of some of the things that he's been doing. So we regularly, out of the office, provide resources, guidance, education. So we connect people when they have questions to experts that can help provide the answers for them in multiple areas. Often, that ends up being agriculture, natural resources, and horticulture-type questions, but we can work in multiple areas. So with this reorganization, we have recognized that we haven't been as successful as we'd like in our old model. It's been running for as long as anybody can see on records of having an Extension Educator and admin and a 4H person in our offices. We know the youth programs are one of the top things. And what the Extension Educator position traditionally has been a master's-level person, could be a PhD, with an expertise. And we bring them in, but we also expect them to connect and liaison with the county and different groups in the community, identify needs in all of those six areas I mentioned. And they also are required to manage staff, make things go, and then on the side, have an expertise and work in that expertise. We're finding... We can't... We get applicants, but we can't find applicants that would not just want to do their expertise. And that's not helping the counties, and it's not helping us keep the positions filled or even getting... We've had failed searches where we have applicants, but we screen them out, because when we ask them questions about what are you going to do for that community, it doesn't come back with an answer that we've been happy about. And this is happening in several counties, by the way. So I've been talking to staff here and yourselves, and other counties have come with the same thing, asking, lower that degree level, figure out how to do this. So what we're talking about is addressing that change. We want to keep that objective of having impactful programming for the public. That's what we do. And we want it across Nevada. Every, you know, in all the counties, we do this. And so we've got to make sure we do that. To do that, we have to have local staff hired and stay hired on ground, you know, or be able to replace that position if it comes empty, like when Lois had to leave. So the reality is, is quality programs means quality people, right? The other thing is, is we want to make sure that we develop a staff that aligns with the available state and county funds. We just had... We're connected to the state mandated salary increases, and we just had 12% this year. We have 11% mandated for next year. So I've been doing some serious number crunching to make sure that we're within budget. Our federal money that comes in, we didn't get an increase on. The state portion, we got 60% of that increase. The county money is the tax that comes in. So we've re-crunched those numbers, finding something sustainable, and that's our goal. So I'm going to pitch what I'm thinking about... sustainable, and that's our goal. So I'm going to pitch what I'm thinking about, and this is a discussion, back and forth, okay, guys? So that's why I'm here more than anything. So currently, it says in black, but it almost comes out in navy, but the darker color is what you've got. You've got Andrew's doing 4H youth development, the 4H clubs with volunteers and families, and family community events. He's working on getting connections with the schools to be more engaged at the school level there. We've been doing the programs, like we said, radon and bringing in group collaborations. Where does this go with the new system and the lighter blue? We will continue with that 4H. It's very important to engage our youth. That builds the whole community when we work with the youth and their families. We want to engage more youth and make that happen. We also want to improve our ability, and this is where we know we can do more with less, is that we have great programs statewide. So what you've been getting is a portion of what's out there, and so there are other possible programs. For example, there's a really strong small business development program running in Las Vegas. They've been putting their courses online, they're available, and we could be looking at adding more connection to those courses and bring them in, in at a better level. There's pesticide application courses, things like that. We are looking at adding a position to connect those state, those programs out to learn the state to the rural counties, because that's where the gap is. And we're also looking at how to bring those people around, so they're in person too as well. So, because we're very much hands-on education as much as we can be, but knowing that the change during COVID is that we have a lot more of the public that are able and consider going online for classes too, so we're taking advantage of those changes. Okay, so that tells you where we're going programming-wise. This is who you connect with, because that's really important, that locally, who do you connect with? Right now, it, traditionally it has been for county meetings and such, it's been the Extension educator. I know Andrew pops in in the back because he's helping cover everything, but that means he's trying to cover the youth and he's trying to do these other things at the same time. Thankfully, we appreciate that, but it takes away from his time with the youth programs and other things that could be happening. The county budget, I always went through the Extension educator and myself. I've been picking that up and making that happen. Andrew actually makes sure that the paperwork gets processed for bills and such. And then youth groups and, and the school district, Andrew covers that, and generally, we all work together to connect with the public as much as possible. The new thing that we're proposing is a position called an Extension County Coordinator. What that is, is, is the Extension educator, as I said, they have the role of connecting, being the liaison, dealing with the budget, knowing who is doing, attending meetings, connecting pieces. Then the other part was their expertise. What we've done was we split that apart. The Extension County Coordinator will have the role of connecting with the county people and the county itself and, and any entities that we should be connected with, the Conservation District, you know, on and on. That position will be one, and then we'll take the expertise and we'll put them into other positions so that they're spending all their time and their expertise and can go up and talk to producers, ranchers, for example, on the ag natural resources side, or any expertise. And then they'll get those questions, and they'll connect with other experts in that field and bring back those answers. So we think it'll strengthen those areas and not have one person torn trying to do two things, so many multiple skill sets. So what this does is that from the county perspective, you'll have an Extension County Coordinator. I'm going to be straight up in it, to make this viable, I have to share that person between counties. So it'll be Humboldt and Lander together, okay? We still have the staff in Humboldt, and I haven't talked to Humboldt County about this. This is first crack. I'm filling gaps first, so I will be going and talking to them. But we think we can do that, and we can ease that gently because Brad is still working in Humboldt County. He's willing to become a natural resource specialist, and so he'll be there, and this will be a nice, easy transition. On the other hand, you will be getting expertise from people like Brad and others moving more into the county when we need it, and that's the key on that. So I want to be open and upfront. This is how we make it work expense-wise, and how we also feel that instead of their time, one person here is split between two duties. We have one person partway here or there, and other people coming in more. In the end, I believe we're going to give you just as good or better service that we have in the past, and it fits within our budget. The other thing is, is this position means that I will put it in at a degree, possibly a master's, if you have it, level of hiring. And our goal is to hire somebody locally with, in either county, but they will be required to spend days on the ground, boots on the ground, in that community split, so that they are doing things. They are attending meetings, they are talking to you guys in person, they are in the office supporting the staff and making that happen. But we see that those skill sets are here in the local community, so we feel we could fill that position quickly. And I'm going to be pushing real hard. I'm already working on campus on this because I need these filled by June 30th, or I lose the state's portion on that 11% increase. So I'm putting the fire under their feet already, and that helps me because that's usually where our delay is. Not really on our end, working with you all to hire, and by the way, when we hire these expertise people that are serving the county, we always ask for a representative on those hiring committees, okay? Because you need to provide us with feedback of is this person going to do the job for us or not. Okay, so that's what it is. That person will be the people connecting. Not that our other program staff won't pop, pop in and out, because if they have expertise in water or they have expertise in natural resources or ag, they should be popping into those meetings and knowing what's going on and interacting with those people more than what we have been. So although Andrew pops into a few, and that's helpful, but we want to make that connection. So otherwise, it pretty much stays the same. And basically, that is, that is my proposal. I'm just trying to have a, start a conversation, is what this is. We know we're trying something new. I have, I am using a model from other states that appear to be successful in this, so I'm not totally, we're adapting it for Nevada because Nevada's Nevada, right? We want to make it for lean and mean for our low budget, but on the other hand, I believe that we are finding a balance that fits the budget and improves the quality of keeping people on the ground doing the job that you guys need, but I would love feedback.
Okay, thanks, Holly.
Well, and not reinventing the wheel is the best aspect anyway, because then you don't have all the foxholes you're going to fall into trying to figure out if it works or not. And so I think that's actually, you know, there's nothing wrong with going with plans that have already worked and worked successfully. And I've said this a million times, but, you know, thanks to Andrew because he really does do a wonderful job, and you are truly appreciated in this community, and I just want to make sure that, nobody can ever hear that enough, but he really is. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Any questions for the public?
I think that was kind of, what was the biggest concern was trying to fill it with the, with the credentials that we were looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think, and I think the share agreement is smart because now we're pulling from that community as well.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think it could work. Yeah, sure.
Yes, and, and the thing is, is we'll have a network of support for these staff people. So not only will they be in the community, but they'll have a network to go, oh, you found that working, you found out about that. And, and so that's, that's what we're looking for. And I apologize, it took me longer. Part of it was, what budget do I have? Can I afford this? Because we're still sorting out university budgets, you can believe this, and we're more than halfway through the year. That's never happened to us before. But I wanted to get the best chance at doing this right. So I really appreciate the conversations I've had with staff that have helped guide along and provided thoughts, and you guys previously were very clear on that. So it's taken me a bit of time, but I, I really appreciate the feedback and the connection. That's what makes it work.
I appreciate the work that you've done on that, because if not, it would just, you would lose the position, and I would really hate to see that happen.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you for recognizing that, because yeah, that's exactly why we've been working hard on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. So I don't, there's nothing really to approve, is there, on it?
Just the thought of it, did we already do?
Okay. All right, thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go back to number five. For discussion and possible action to establish the minimum compensation of the justices of the peace pursuant to NRS 4.040 for Argenta Township Justice Court and Austin Township Justice Court for the sixth year term, beginning Monday, January 6, 2025, the first Monday of January following the election for NRS 4.0251. Okay, so you guys all, all got this hand out to find out where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Are there any questions? Public, have any questions or input?
I have a question.
Yes.
You guys have started the discussion, so. Marlene Casalanos for the record.
All I want to point out is the backup in here for the current judge's position. You guys determined that pre-candemic. And there's been cost of living, obviously you guys are aware of. You recognize that even with our public defender's new contract, a substantial increase you go in with the new laws, with the new workload. So that's all I ask you to keep that in mind when you decide then.
Okay. Thank you, Marlene.
Good comment along those lines, just setting the minimal, just so everybody knows. This is, it doesn't mean they can't increase it later. They can increase it anytime from now until six years from now.
Right. So if there's no more questions, I'll hear a motion.
So I'll make the motion to, to get established. So is that accepting the, what's been presented?
Yeah, well, what we have is the 71,361 as a base for Argenta, and then for Austin, $44,810.40.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the noted from the chair.
Okay. And so we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. So we, we have Dr. Ross here. Okay, so we'll move into number six. We're going to recess the Board of the Lander County Commissioner and convene the meeting of the Lander County Health Board, opposed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Ron Under and Dr. Troy Ross. We got one for him?
Is it up on the backside?
Under does lightly the seat over there. No, he'll sit there and hold it.
Ron, come on up here and join us. These are really comfy seats, aren't they?
You get to sit down here.
I'm curious how long it's gonna take to get that.
Longer. Everybody in seat number four, please?
No crying and baseball pants.
No, Ron might use them. Just call me mine.
You get the chairman's seat. You're supposed to be in the chairman's seat.
I'm not the chairman's.
You are for this particular party.
Dr. Ross can sit right there. His name quite certainly.
Yeah, everybody that, we're just waiting for Dr. Ross, our chairperson here, to start the items. All right, I'd like to convene the Lander County Board of Health meeting for January 11. And for our first item, we have a representative from Naco, Amy Heinz-Sutherland, who's going to give us a presentation. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ross, would you mind reading that in, please, the item?
So this is item one for possible action, presentation of the Lander County opioids needs, needs assessment by Amy Heinz-Sutherland from Naco, for discussion and possible action to identify and prioritize the actions to be undertaken by the county.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner, for having me here today, Board. I appreciate it very much. As Dr. Ross shared, I'm Amy Heinz-Sutherland. I'm the public health coordinator for Naco. And the presentation I have for you here today is on the opioid needs assessments and also the opioid settlement funding. So the county has begun the assessment process, and I'll go over that a little bit today. But really, the overview that you'll get is, is a focus on what are those funds, how can they be spent, what resources are available to do that project, and then at a later date, that assessment will come back to you for review. So just a real quick overview of the opioid settlement funds, those were, you know, Lander County is part of the One Nevada Agreement. On behalf of the state, the AG's office litigates those funds. They come to the county under the stipulations of the One Nevada Agreement, and there are specific allowable uses and assessment pieces and planning that go along with utilizing those funds to best serve the community. A quick distribution overview. So as we shared, the Attorney General gets that settlement funding. The remainder goes to the One Nevada Agreement. County, counties and cities that are a part of that One Nevada Agreement directly get those funds, and what is required by counties in receiving those funds is reporting back to the AG's office every year on how those funds have been spent. On here, you'll see county regional needs assessments are recommended. As part of the One Nevada Agreement, you do not have to complete a needs assessment, but it is recommended because the county is not allowed to apply for the state's portion of funds without having completed an assessment. So while it also helps you in planning for how you'll use your dollars, it can leverage additional funds if you identify certain needs that your county dollars are not able to fully pay for. And then finally, this last box is the Fund for Resilient Nevada. So that's the state's portion of funds. And so the way the state process runs is that all the dollars that are put into the Fund for Resilient Nevada, they contracted a company called Mercer to conduct their needs assessment, and they will grant out those funds in alignment with the statewide needs that were identified through that process. I think I've got it on another slide, but it fits here too. So Mercer Consulting, the state contractor, they also provided a certain amount of technical assistance to counties as part of the state's requirement to support counties with needs assessments, and Lander did take advantage of that free resource at the end of last year. And so here's just a illustration here, local governments, the Medicaid match, that portion of funds is also coming to local governments, and then the state of Nevada run for Resilient Nevada. This is an estimate, this is, so the state of Nevada, when it's all said and done, 2042, and again, there's ongoing lawsuits, so this number could grow. But this estimate shows that the state of Nevada's net allocation over that time period will be $420 million, 293,377. Lander estimated total at the end of 2023 was $286,361 for in opioid abatement funds. For in opioid abatement funds, with a total payout at the end of the process, twenty forty-two, of two million seventy-seven thousand five hundred twelve. And these numbers were from the AG's office as of September of twenty twenty-three. So again, there will be an update as additional settlements come in. One thing I really want to highlight is that there are specific allowable uses. So there are a number of places where you can go to get more information on those allowable uses. One of the services that Naco is providing to counties is guidance with that. National Naco has a number of resources that help counties identify the best use of those funds for counties of various sizes. But it is important that those dollars be expended just on those allowable uses. And so technical assistance, this is that Mercer assistance that I described. So technical assistance was available through December of twenty twenty-three. Lander took advantage of that, which was great. So they've got some real good, you all have some real good information from that consultant regarding additional things to put into your assessment. Alignment with the state, if you'd like to align. Alignment is helpful in areas where your need maps to the state need because you can potentially apply for state dollars to fund that piece, where you wouldn't have to lose, use Lander County opioid funds to do that. And myself, the Naco Public Health Coordinator, will continue to help with this work, even though the Mercer Consulting is no longer there. And then should you, and I don't think Lander will need to take advantage of this, but should you want to use an independent contractor to conduct the needs assessment, we have a list of those that have been doing that work in the state. And also want to direct you to the National Association of Counties. They have a work group that has been working on opioid solutions. Counties across the country are, you know, involved in finding the best ways to serve their communities with these dollars. And so they've got a number of approved strategies from the county lens, right? What does it make sense for county governments and county teams to take on with these dollars? And finally, just a heads up on what I can do for you all. Monitor county level progress on local needs assessments. So if you're wondering what's happening regionally, and if you wanted to build up, you know, regional collaborations on some of these, we are tracking those assessments in other counties as well and helping make those connections where it makes sense for you. And then also supporting in developing your needs assessment and then facilitating county interface with the state. So the State Office of Analytics will provide data to anyone, but we kind of have a fast track on some of that because the state's required by law to support us in getting counties the data they need for opioid assessments. So just to sum up, and happy to take questions too. Lander is involved in this process right now and, you know, ongoing with their assessment. But eventually, once that's completed, it would be good for it to come back to this board for review. And whatever support you would like in terms of how to set up a funding process or, you know, options as to how various counties have tackled, how to make those decisions, we're here for technical assistance in that regard. Happy to answer any questions and thank you for your time.
On the, on the needs assessments, how, so, I mean, that's a broad generality. So like, what areas are you focusing on when you do, like, you come into Lander County, you do this need assessment? Like, what are the things that we're looking for? And then how are those statistics provided?
Right, great question. So what we did with the Mercer support in connected, together with the county team, is we asked Mercer, okay, we want to help develop a survey that makes sense for Lander County, that takes into consideration the resources available and the known needs in the community. And so they provided a template of questions that was then vetted by the team. The survey was distributed in November. And so it really was focused on substance use, specifically opioid use, but also substance use. And asked questions like, have you been, like, yes or no, have you been impacted? If you've been impacted by the opioid epidemic, in what settings? At work, at home, in your community? And then there, in order to support the county with identifying uses and needs that also align with how those funds could be spent, there were ca.
Sorry. Don't be dead rough. But our new commissioner has just been sworn in, so maybe she can take her seat on the board.
Oh, absolutely, welcome.
Yep.
Yeah. And then right here, when we change fours, you'll move right here.
Okay. So.
So you move over here.
Sorry, tell me what to do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, so really asking, have you been impacted? Where have you been impacted? And then when it comes to, what do you, what do you community members think is needed? And what are the biggest issues that you see? And so the list of issue, you know, potential issues came from, you know, a national consultant who's like, here's, here's a lot of issues coming up in communities. If the Lander team identified, yeah, we just kind of know that one's not here. You know, there's a little, a few things taken off, but not many. And then for the, what would you like to see to improve the situation in Lander County? We only included things that were either the team wanted to have on or that we are known allowable uses. So that when you get the assessment back, instead of having all these ideas that may or may not be things you can use the funding on, you'll have a prioritization, a set of priorities you can take a look at, where like, okay, we could actually use these dollars to support these.
So, so when you, so like, these questions are asked of a community, is there something that you mail out to every person in town? How, I mean, how you contact the people to do the assessment or ask the question?
Right. So, great question. So we did make it available in both paper and online. I think we had about ten, twelve people submit the paper one, something like that. But, but basically worked with Brandy and Dr. Ross and Mr. Ramos to get an understanding of who should be distributing it and where it should go out to, made sure to include the schools. And it's an online survey. So it was, it was an online survey. And I, I should know this off the top of my head. I believe we had a hundred and twenty-five responses. I'm so sorry, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's right around there. It was a good response in terms of the county population.
Okay. Yeah, because that was my concern, is like, if you're getting these responses back, like, what is the number? And is it a true representation of your county and its position of how people feel?
Certainly.
Yeah.
So I would say, so luckily, what you have in addition to the assessment survey is you have a couple ongoing projects. So in addition, the hospital recently completed a community health needs assessment. So that data is being pulled into the opioid needs assessment as well. And then also at the jail, of going through of a potential MAT, medication assisted treatment program model. So that information's included. And then additionally, it's very just, it's very much still in process. So if, if you take a look at what's currently available in the assessment, you're like, this doesn't feel like it's comprehensive enough. You can decide to set up additional town halls or community meetings. It's very much still in process, but what we did do, the Mercer funding, the free technical assistance from Mercer was going to be up at the end of December. And so we said, what can we do with the Mercer assistance before it runs out? And this was one of the things that we could take, you know, take on.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So you said you sent this to all of Lander County?
It was distributed as widely as we could, could get it out. So it went through the county manager's office team, Dr. Ross, Brandy. We did include, Brandy Mingo, the community health nurse, also included the schools. Whether every Lander County resident, you know, saw it, I mean, they might have seen it, but not participated. We have about, I'll double check the number, I think around one twenty-five to one thirty responses on that survey. And we, and we have the ability to open it back up too, if you'd like. I mean, there's no reason why you couldn't. The reason we have the closure date is so that we could get the data to Mercer, the state consultant, to, to give that professional feedback on, hey, here's what your community's saying. Here's some, some areas of focus that it makes sense based on what your secondary data is saying, like your actual rates of substance use or your rates of, we looked at, for example, the specialty courts. Rates of people being referred to specialty court for certain drug uses. We wanted the Mercer team to be able to take a look at the community survey. But that survey went out through a Naco survey monkey, so we could open it back up too, if you so wish to get, you know, additional data.
Because I don't think I saw anything in Austin or Kingston on it.
So it was what we did on the county side. We put it in the newsletter and then we sent it to every single Lander County email address that we have. So everybody should have received it, whether you recognized what it was. I know a lot of people see a survey in their email and.
Makes junk.
Trash man. But that, that is how we advertised it from the county side.
All right.
Oh, and, and the Facebook page as well, so.
But to your point, if it did not get the right traction, then this is our opportunity to figure out how to, to make that next effort to, to get it out to the right people.
Right.
And in the end, that's just the input from the community. We at, at this level, will be making the decisions on how to prioritize and spend those funds. So members of the Board of Health, members of the county commission can certainly go and poll their constituencies to get better information on the decisions that we're going to be making.
So, you know, in some, however, however you decide to go with that, we're happy to reopen the survey, get the link back out to you, support with any sort of other town hall or community meeting, however you would like to handle that. That's something that we can help with at Naco. And, and, you know, at your, I, you know, however you'd like to handle it. But again, it's, it's not, it's not a finished product by any means yet. And so I think, you know, as Dr. Ross shared, it's part of the process is making sure those responses are in. And there's some pretty rich information in there already. And so, you know, I feel confident that you've got some, some really great information to work with from the community. There was a lot of, in addition to yes or no questions or rankings, there was a lot of free response, and there's really a lot of richness in the free response too, that I think point to some, some opportunities.
I think part of the problem is to, as soon as somebody sees the word survey, they just keep going, unfortunately, because they don't realize how much of an impact these surveys have. So sadly enough.
And to be honest, I don't know how many people actually in Austin follow the Lander County page or even look at that. Maybe that's something we need to figure out to do differently to get the Austin and Kingston more involved.
Because there's a lot of information on that, the, the, just drew the blank. The.
Yes, that's it.
The newsletter and the page. There's a huge, but, yeah, people just.
So you track how many people actually read it? Because you should be able to track it and see how many people from each.
So out of, out of the fifteen hundred and seventy-two that we send it to, usually there's about three hundred and, three hundred and fifty that actually.
But can you tell which areas are reading it?
No.
No.
It's, it's just a, it's just a poll.
Because you can't actually pin it down.
Very good, thank you very much.
Is there any public comment or questions?
I got the emails.
Thank you. Very good, thank you, Ian.
No pressure.
Then going on to item two on the agenda, this is informational.
So on item one, is there anything you guys would like done?
Would you guys like us to re-advertise the survey? Is there any points in this, in this that are of concern that we should be readdressing on our end, or are you guys just good with where it stands? That would be my main, I think that was the, the main thing was that just making sure that the majority of people, so we have a true, like, feeling of what our community needs are, you know what I'm saying? So you, you have, we have five, six thousand people, and then if we're only getting a hundred surveys back, does it really represent a totality of what our needs are in this community? That, that was my biggest thing, is how do you get it out there and get the voices of the majority of your people, you know?
Just on that, I just do want to share, one of the things we included is, is we asked people to select their sector, whether it was, say, working in schools or mining or agriculture, law enforcement. You did have representation across the board, which was great. And we noticed at one point that, for example, there was not a lot of tribal representation. So did some additional outreach to get those in. So we did try to do a cross-sector. Part of the reason why we didn't do location identifiers is that people are worried about privacy. And so we did, and it's also a very sensitive topic. And so we could do it by zip code so that people would have to put that in, but we didn't know if it would discourage people from completing the survey. So that was, that was actually a conscious decision. But, but in terms of getting it out.
You know, one option to get it out is to do a physical mailing. I don't know to what level of detail we have mailing addresses for county residents, but.
And could we use these funds to pay for that mailing? Oh, we could, yes. That might, that might be a good thing.
Are there any other thoughts on how to reach a?
That's, I mean, that's, if we're going to cover it, that's how we're going to cover it. And it's going to end up going to, basically, because we have the addresses for the people who have filed to vote.
You should have registered voters and you should have your property owners and you should be able to cross-reference those so that you're not double mailing.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
And then you can also go through your utilities because sometimes your utilities are people that are ranchers that normally fall through the cracks.
It's a good thought. You bet, we have a mailing list, we can send it out.
Okay.
And I think the, just one additional consideration there is that when they come back, just the, the staff time to do that input. So we can make that tool available, no problem, but someone will have to manually go in. And if you've got a really large response, you could have literally thousands of, these surveys are, are long-ish, you know, printed. It's going to be nine or eleven pages. So just making sure to account for the fact that you'll have some staff time to input all of that data. And we can export an Excel sheet that allows a staff person to put it directly in that Excel, but that, that could be expensive. So just considering there's.
Well, I mean, if we have funds to use for that, I mean, if we have to bring in volunteers to do it and you pay them out of that, because that's the whole point. We're addressing a certain area in our community. And I'd rather know that we're doing it right, rather than just not, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely. Just wanted to add that additional.
But yes, noted, yeah.
And with that mailing, you could still direct them to complete the survey online, so. You don't necessarily have them all written.
Yeah.
Right. And Sean had a good idea too. Maybe we can put a QR code in there and they can just, you know, pull it up on their phone, opt the mailing, and then they can jump right on it and.
Get that survey.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Does the survey have a QR code? We could fill that out too.
Any other thoughts on actions to take at this time? Or I think that if we were to revisit the survey and make sure we get maximum participation, that could be a very good next step. And when we take those results and we have a working group meeting scheduled for mid-March, and we would look to get those results by that time to move forward.
I don't think we need a motion, and we got direction, we'll do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And to, item two on the agenda, informational. This is a presentation on Naco and UNR Extension County Level Foundational Public Health Services Assessment.
Thank you. All right, so you're getting a lot of me today. Thank you. And so Amy Heinz-Sutherland with Naco for the record. So this is a project, as Dr. Ross suggested, we're mentioned, that we're working on with UNR Extension. Some introduction, so myself, I'm the Public Health Coordinator for Naco. And then Joe Lednicki and Marlene Ribory are UNR Extension team, working on this project. And so what are we doing? So we're establishing a baseline, county by county, of public health infrastructure. This is different than your community health needs assessments that take a look at health outcomes and behaviors and things like that. Instead, it's what is the, the local infrastructure to respond to health needs? And so why do we care about establishing a baseline? It'll enable improvement and increased efficiency. One of the things that Naco supports counties with is increasing efficiency and, you know, bringing resources that help you make the tough decisions you need to make. So mapping the current state will allow you to see what is your public health infrastructure look like. So that includes things like hospital services, but it also includes things like restaurant inspections when it comes to environmental health, your community health nursing services. It, it'll help you see not just what Lander's got, but also your regional picture, county by county. And hopefully with the aim of increasing efficiency, right? Not reinventing the wheel everywhere, but just understanding what is the, the mapping of that infrastructure look like. The data also helps you and your local partners advocate for additional dollars. So of course, with the legislature, right, everyone's got a lot of asks of the state general fund and of other monies available. And so if you have data that, that backs up your needs, you're more able to advocate for those additional dollars, whether it's through a grants process or an advocacy process. And then also I want to highlight that we're seizing the opportunity to use now, new nationally available tools. So the Public Health National Center for Innovation, it's a subset of the Public Health Accrediting Board, the National Public Health Accrediting Board. And they developed a tool that, it's been developed for many years, but it was released in April of this year. It's a costing and assessment tool. What Naco's doing together with UNR Extension does not quite use the costing pieces yet. That's where it gets into how many FTEs you would need for each position. I mean, that's, that's a different discussion if, if Lander wanted to go there. What we're doing is the initial baseline that just says, what do you have available currently? And, and once we have that county by county, then those conversations about whether you want to maintain the state services and the status quo that you currently have, or work with other counties, or work alone to create other services, that's totally up to you. What we're just delivering. What we're just delivering is that baseline, using a nationally available tool. And so what tools do you, do you have to support establishing a baseline? This is what we're referencing throughout this process. So first, you've got, you've got these four tools, the list of mandated services, state community health needs assessments, local community health needs assessments, and then for this foundational public health services assessment that we're completing. So on the local side, this board of health, right, state mandated board in the county. You also have your county health officer. It does not apply to land or currently health districts though, right? So there are already state mandated services and, and services that are required to be delivered either by the state or by your local health authority. And then we also have the state mandated services that will always stay with the state. And so that helps us understand what, what's available. And as you know, twenty eleven, you likely know, in twenty eleven, the Nevada Legislature passed State Bill 471, requiring rural, rural counties to pay the state through an assessment process for some of the services that the state provides in the public health space. And so in twenty twenty-three, for example, DPVH received five hundred and fifty-three thousand in assessment fees to deliver these services for the county. And so additionally, there is a process where counties can submit to get those assessments removed when you take on those services for yourself. So totally up to the county and each county how they like to do that. So that's one of the things we take a look at. The state community health needs assessment, super, well, I guess you can kind of see it, but anyway, state just completed one of these in twenty twenty-two. Local, Mount, Battle Mountain General Hospital just completed a community health needs assessment. So you do have, you know, a rich document of information there with an extensive survey, which was great. They got a lot of community feedback on, on what the needs are. And then we come to the topic for today, the foundational public health services assessment. So in, in addition to the statute of poorly required things, the assessments that already take place at the state and local level around health behaviors, you will now have a dataset that's like, well, what's the infrastructure to support addressing those needs that were identified in the state and local health needs assessments? So what are the foundational public health services? So this represents a minimum package that this national group has said every community should have access to all of these services for public health to work everywhere. That does not mean that the county or the government needs to provide them all, although this organization does say, you know, this is what every government health authority should be providing. However, Nevada's unique and there's a number of other states that are also like Nevada, where the state is the health authority for most of the state. And so in those areas, it, it's often a community partnership, right? Maybe the county delivers some, the state delivers some, and then the community, like, for example, the hospital delivers some of the services. But the benefit of using this model allows you to understand your infrastructure compared to other counties, and then also compared to other light counties in other states. So earlier we talked a little bit about if a model works somewhere else, like let's not reinvent the wheel. So it, it's a deliberate choice by UNR Extension and NACO to use a tool that will allow you to benchmark with other places. So what are those services? I know this is quite small, but there's, the bubbles at the top, those are those five programmatic areas. So that's communicable disease control, chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental, public health, maternal, child, and family health, and then access to and linkage with clinical care. So those are the five core areas that we're taking a look at. What services are available in the county around those five? And then the eight boxes below, those are capabilities. So if you take a look, you'll see those are kind of things that are often applied to any business that functions well, right? Policy development, communication, organizational competencies. So the point with this is that you're not just seeing a list of services, but you're wondering, you're, you're also seeing what infrastructure is in place to improve those services, or check in to see if they're even effective, or if they're having the impact that you want them to have. And this is just a quick snapshot of what, the survey tool is actually online, but this is what, this is what is getting rated. So experts, public health experts, health experts in the county will be asked to complete the survey. It's not a general community survey. It's meant to say, okay, we're going to identify all the folks who have some knowledge in this space and they're going to complete it. They don't have to complete the whole thing, they just complete their specialty section. And so then we kind, that, that we're able to get those kernels of knowledge and expertise from, from the folks that can deliver it. So they share what is the expertise level in the county, the capacity level, and the level of program implementation. And that, those ratings become really helpful, right? Because you're like, oh, hey, we've got that expertise here, but that person's busy all the time, right? They're overloaded. So we can't do anything with their expertise because there's not enough time. Or you might have staff that aren't available to do some things, but they, they need some training to be able to get there and deliver that piece. So that's why you've got expertise and capacity. And if you'll notice the columns, I think this is one of the pieces most helpful to counties, is that we ask those experts, break it up by who delivers the service. So you may or may not know all of the state-supported services that currently exist in Lander. But it, from our experience going through this process already with a couple of counties, it's, nobody knows all the state services, right? Because they're so specialized in so many different ways. So you'll have a listing of all the state services that support health in the county, the county-supported services, for example, the community health nursing program, regional health department or districts, if there's any other health authority in the state that supports you with the service, that'll be there. And then, very importantly, the community-supported services. So what happens from tribal clinics, hospitals, schools, that information? This is not accurate because it's ongoing, but this is just one of the datasets you'll have, right? You'll have a color gradient, you'll have an understanding, okay, across all these areas and capabilities, here's where we, we've got strength, here's where we've got need. And, and from there, you can take whatever action you want with the information, right? It's just getting you that baseline data. And this has been done in other states. Washington State conducted one in twenty eighteen. That, that LHJ up there, that's local health jurisdictions. So typically, this tool is utilized by health departments to evaluate themselves. In the state of Nevada, because the state is the health department for most counties, the state would have to conduct such, such an exercise. But what we found is that conducting it at the local level allows you to do this kind of ground-truthing of like, well, what does that service actually look like in Lander? What does that service look like? Is, is the state, is the state a funding stream for that program? But we've got our local team actually developing or delivering that resource. Oregon State also completed one in twenty sixteen. We've got some great models to look to. And then timeline the next steps. So for Lander County, we would love to have a volunteer commissioner champion to participate in the process. We'll have a kickoff call on January twenty-fifth at three P M via Zoom. It will be the same presentation you just heard. So it's just to get the folks identified as the experts to participate in the survey, to hear what you just heard and ask any questions they have in advance of the survey going out. The survey's been distributed and there's three weeks for them to complete. Were our teams available throughout that process to answer any questions? An agency, say, for example, the hospital can receive a single survey and, you know, kind of fill it out as a team, or individuals can fill it out, either way. And then we'd like to have an in-person, three-hour community meeting to review and verify the information. So no one person knows everything at all, right? So when, what, what we found has happened, and this has been a really important piece of this project, is that when you get all those partners in a room together, even though it is like a large quantity of time, they can kind of bounce off each other like, oh, okay, yes, I thought the school district did this, but actually they do this. Oh, I thought the hospital did this, but they actually do this. And everyone's there to make sure that the dataset that comes back to you is accurate, right? And reflects like the best thinking in the community and, and what the, the community knows is available. So that was a lot, and thank you, and I'm happy to answer, again, any questions and also welcome additional recommendations as to who include, whom to include in the survey. And we can share our, our draft list of who we anticipated sending it to, and would love that to be as robust as possible.
Any questions from the board members or comments?
Hi there. Amy Nelson. Just wanted to consider including the Frontier Community Coalition in this conversation. The reason is, we meet monthly. Alicia Price is the coordinator. We have law enforcement representatives, school, 4-H, our EMTs, pretty much everyone in town, everybody, there's representation all over the place. And we also are, that can do it for the community because we have the capability of having funding brought to us. We then monitor and audit and ensure whatever services go through the FCC are, have fidelity. For example, we'll have a parenting group, or we'll work with the youth through the schools, teaching prevention ideas. So the funding potentially could go through the FCC to take pressure off of you guys having to monitor, keep up with all grant requirements, and make sure there's fidelity involved. So when you bring the people to the table, consider doing, maybe even having the presentation at the FCC meeting and having all the players involved.
Thank you. May I respond to that?
Of course.
So thank you, and perfect, and that, and I have something to add now, now that, that you shared that. So one, yes, absolutely, the coalition is on, on that list and is critical to this, so thank you. And one other piece I do want to mention is that while the national tool does not include behavioral health as a foundational public health service, it was developed by public health professionals that did not include behavioral health. We know mental behavioral health and substance use is so important. So that is actually also a part of this. We do invite the behavioral health provider community to participate. They don't do the expertise and capacity ratings because those definitions and tools were developed for the public health services, but we do have them, we invite them to participate and share what services are available across those four delivering entities. And so thank you, yes. That's, that's exactly how we hope to do this, is through community meetings that are already taking place, you know, get, make sure everyone's at the table. What is provided back to you is only as good as the people willing to participate in it, right? So we, we do, and this is part of why we'd love to come to the commission, is we just want to, you know, we know that you are influential in your community and are able to encourage participation, and we want you to have, have good information come back out of it. So thank you for that.
Are there any other public comments or questions? From the board?
Thank you.
Closest thoughts?
You.
Thank you, Amy. Then moving on to item three, this is informational. It's an update on the winter respiratory diseases and prevention programs at Lander County Community Health. So a presentation I'm going to get some help with. And you could go to the next slide. So people talk a lot about flu season, and I wanted to give everyone a brief orientation to what is the flu? What we call flu is really any illness in the respiratory tract that makes us feel sick. And it's important to, to keep that in mind because people mix terms and get a little bit confused on that very important starting point, and that matters when it comes to us looking at prevention and treatment. So to dig a little deeper into that, most cases of what we call flu is not actually influenza virus illness. There's a list on this slide of the, some of the many viruses that are implicated in causing these winter illnesses. But then there are also toxins and there are bacterial illnesses. And so once again, to just talk about flu keeps us from being able to focus on a lot of important points. So with that, then, why this matters in looking at the, the update of what's happening in our winter is what is considered the respiratory illness season or the flu season. It's defined as being from October through May. Usually we'll see peaks toward the end of December, that's when most people are getting ill. And then, not uncommon to get some smaller bumps in activity in the February through March timeframe. But again, October through May is considered to be flu or respiratory virus season. Go to the next slide. So busy graph here, but you can see that the lines drawn in the middle of that graph are indicating that February through March timeframe. And you can see the peaks, the larger peaks are at the week fifty-two, which is the end of the year, that December surge that we'll usually get. And I want to keep people oriented on that, just to have an understanding of the fact that we have had our peak in our communities, that flu season outbreak illness is already peaked and is starting to recede. So that matters because people are now feeling, oh, okay, we, we made it through. Well, yeah, except for the fact that there's a very likely opportunity for there to be another little surge of, of some illnesses a little later as we get through the end of winter. Next. Again, busy slide. The takeaway, I think, is over on the left with those numbers, that right now, we're having about a six-point-five percent rate of people presenting for medical care that actually have influenza, or I'm sorry, influenza-like illness, so anything that looks like flu. But you can see that that line at the top that, that's interrupted, that's our current season versus what's the historical average over five years. So again, we peaked and we're starting to go down. That's a good thing. But it's not time for us to, to declare victory. We need to, to stay vigilant and be helping our community members to be doing the right things to stay healthy. The next slide. And this looks at what we have for the hospitalizations. And you can see that, that we hit a peak a few weeks ago. So again, we're, we're past the, the most critical point in our winter illness season. Next slide. Now, we've heard a lot about RSV, Respiratory Syncytial Virus. That's the new bugaboo that, that everybody is, is hearing in the media, that the, the healthcare systems are starting to, to push. Well, you can see that the, it, it's not as big an issue for us as it's been put out in the media. The, the peak that you can see that's to the left in those graphs, that's last year's RSV season. Where we're at right now, that red line, is the peak for our season, which is already declining rapidly. So this is going to get to, to the point at the end, which is a lot of, of mis-focused attention from my perspective on vaccinating and distancing and, and doing all of the things that really haven't been shown to be very effective in the past. And the reality is that we're past the point where we even need to be concerned about that. But more to that in, toward the end. So the next slide. And then here, you can see COVID. So COVID is still talked about, it's still in the media a lot, but you can see that that big peak was from the twenty-one, twenty-two year. And since then, the, off to the right of that graph, that's where we're at in this current respiratory virus season, very, very little COVID and no epidemic outbreak peaks at all. It's a flat line. Kind of at what we expect when any virus, any illness gets into the population and is what's called endemic. It's just there, we're not going to get rid of it, but we also don't need to, to put undue attention into that area when there are other things that it's important to pay attention to. So next slide. So here, apologize for this being rather small. It used to be that we would talk about just flu and then we included pneumonia. And in the last three years, we've added a new letter to the acronym. So now you'll hear about what's called PIC, P-I-C, so that's pneumonia, influenza, and COVID. And you know, we're still in the, the flu season, so most of the attention is to the flu. But if you look at that graph on the left, the red-orange line at the top looks at all of the activity in those three categories, but flu is barely there. Unfortunately, it doesn't come out well on this, but there's a little orange blip at the very bottom of that graph that's flu activity. So most of the hospitalizations that we're seeing, most of the, the impactful illness is not coming from influenza. And it's also not coming from COVID. That COVID is the, the gray area under that curve. So where is it coming from? It's from all of those other things. And that becomes important when we look at how do we treat people when they're ill? How do we keep them from getting ill? So there are very specific treatments for COVID, there are very specific antiviral treatments for influenza, and they're expensive, they're not very effective. treatments for influenza, and they're expensive, they're not very effective, but prevention always is effective, and there's more to it than what we have always had pushed in our faces about getting vaccinated. So the next slide, please. So, this is a really interesting little piece of marketing from the CDC. I've been doing public health for over twenty years, and I've never seen this kind of messaging. I'm not a big fan of the CDC, but they hit the right kind of semi-truthful tone. So their whole message is, well, you want to get a vaccination, in this case flu, but they'll tell you the same thing about COVID or RSV, and why do you want to do it? Because you'll turn it from wild to mild. So they don't say it's going to keep you healthy, they just say, well, you know, you get this shot and you'll get less ill. Well, you know, yeah, maybe, except for one interesting data point that I came upon when I was doing my data gathering on all of this. So, if you look at influenza vaccinations nationwide, about fifty percent of people in the United States that take a flu vaccine. In Nevada, it's about eighteen percent, so we're failing, right? We're undervaccinated. But then if you go back and you look at the historical baseline of influenza illness in the nation as a whole, it's about two-point-nine percent of all hospitalizations averaged out over the entire year. So two-point-nine percent when you're fifty percent vaccinated. What is it here in the state of Nevada? It's two-point-six percent. So a lower rate of people presenting for care because of influenza, and yet we have less than half of the rate of vaccination for influenza. Interesting point. Please file that one away, because the next item that I'm going to be bringing up to the board and for discussion, I think addresses that much more meaningfully, and what we do to keep ourselves healthy, what our community health staff and what the public health, the Board of Public Health can do to help keep people healthy. And that's the end of this update. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you for your attention there. Then, moving on to item four, and this is for possible action. This is for discussion and possible action to authorize a program to be administered by Lander County Community Health to offer countywide screening for vitamin D deficiency and to offer treatment through supplementation to all identified with vitamin D deficiency. All healthcare practitioners within the county will be invited to participate. Measures of health and disease conditions will be gathered at baseline when people sign up to participate, and then at six-month follow-up. Then, yeah, you would, go ahead and start that, thank you. So, next slide there, please. So, brief introduction to what vitamin D is. We all understand that it's an important vitamin, but it also is a hormone inside of our bodies that has multiple functions. It's involved in the health of our bones, we understand that, that's talked about a lot with the necessity of having good calcium levels, and vitamin D is involved in that. It also has a role in immune function, inflammation, in glucose metabolism, and in neuromuscular function, how our muscles perform, how our nervous system performs. It's important to understand that this is found in only a few foods naturally, it's put into supplementation form in a lot of food products, but ultimately, this is something that we're designed to make for ourselves. When we expose our skin to the sun, that's when we produce our own endogenous vitamin D, and that's an important factor in modern life because we're not getting enough of that, of our own production. So the next slide. And so, why does this matter to health? The chart that you see on the screen is the top causes of death in Nevada, and it's similar at a nationwide level. So there are sixteen different causes of death outlined there, and all but two have a direct relationship to vitamin D deficiency. If you have an interest in discussing any of those, we can certainly pull them out and look a little more deeply, but there is a very large body of literature in the published medical studies that show that every one of those conditions of mortality are made worse when there's a vitamin D deficiency in that person that's affected. So the two that I wouldn't be able to necessarily make a very direct connection to, but you know, even there are some peripheral connections to accidents and homicides. So, on to the next slide. Then, if you look at what's costing us money in our healthcare system, so these are the most, the five most expensive diseases, disease conditions in the United States, and very similar in our communities. So, Alzheimer's, diabetes, heart disease and stroke, cancer, and obesity. Those cost us the most money in the healthcare system, but it also costs the people affected an incredible detriment in their quality of life and in their ability to just enjoy themselves in life and to produce as parents and as wage earners. And, again, there is a direct connection with every one of those conditions and vitamin D deficiency. And also, we know that even people that are in the middle of dealing with those conditions, if we can improve their vitamin D status in their body, that those conditions are lessened in their severity, and sometimes we can even reverse them with the adjunct of the other medical interventions. Next slide. So, how do we make a difference in addressing that issue? Well, ultimately, it's getting people back out into the sun, getting them into an overall better state of health. But until we're able to accomplish that, we have a very straightforward intervention, and that's to offer vitamin D supplementation. Go ahead and go to the next. So this is what I'm proposing and how I see this project working. We're going to offer screening at no cost to all the members of Lander County to get a vitamin D status. This is a simple lab test. Then, once we identify those who are deficient, and that's the measure on the lab value of less than thirty nanograms per deciliter, just the level that's been established as adequate vitamin D, those people will be offered supplementation. We can do that through the community health clinic, and it can be done either with a one-time intramuscular injection that boosts vitamin D levels for several months, or it can be offered to them as a daily oral supplement that they can take home. Once we have people in this program, then we will be measuring the effect of supplementation, measure them at the six-month mark, and then also voluntary in this regard, but asking them to give us their health status, their health history, so we can find out what impact that this has, get their baseline level of health, and then, at the retest time at the end of six months, poll them and find out how they're doing with this, what improvements has that given them in their lives. So, again, my proposal is to implement this organically through Lander County Community Health Clinic, and with that, put it to the board for discussion, any questions?
I have a question on the being in the sun and how that's converted into vitamin D. Does sunscreen affect that?
Absolutely.
It does. So if you wear sunscreen, you're not actually getting the vitamin D absorption that you would need, so it would counterproductive.
Right. The whole point of a sunscreen, a sunblock, is to block the UV radiation that causes burns when you're overexposed, but we have to have that direct contact of that UV light photon to our skin that starts the process of your body producing its vitamin D.
So I'm going to ask you this, because I'm one of the guys, you know, if you know there's something good, I tend to overdo it. So is there a recommended amount of time that somebody should stay in the sun, you know, to get that vitamin D that they need?
Yes, and obviously, it varies for each one of us. We have different histories with sun exposure, different skin tones, but it's something called the minimal erythematous dose. So basically, you go out in the sun until you feel your skin getting a little hot and a little pink, and you know, that's your cutoff point. And then as you have longer periods of exposure, your, that minimal dose is going to increase. So the point is to not burn.
So one other question, so then with seasons, so it would probably be natural to say that during winter, vitamin D levels in a population increase?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. And the latitude that we're at, even if you were to go out on a sunny day in the middle of winter and spend a good portion of the day outside in your shorts and t-shirt, you probably still could not get enough UV exposure to bring your vitamin D levels up. There's just so much of the angle of the sun going through the atmosphere that most of what we need is filtered out.
Okay. Thank you.
And then what would the cost of this be?
Hmm? Right now, we're looking at about thirty dollars to do a vitamin D test. The supplementation runs probably fifteen dollars a month, or fifteen to, yeah, about fifteen to twenty dollars a month. The testing, as I mentioned, would be offered at no cost to people who want to participate. The supplementation, we can, once the person is identified as vitamin D deficient, we can get some insurance reimbursement for treating that condition. So, the cost would depend on how many people that we can actually bring in to participate. But it's, we have it within the community health budget now that we're, we have some line items that are under-executed, and so it wouldn't take any additional budgetary item to add.
So we wouldn't be adding to the budget because we already have underfunded stuff that we haven't funded, so, correct?
Correct.
And where does the results of this study go to?
Well...
Who are you sharing it with?
With the community. Ultimately, this is for the people of the community. If this turns out to have some meaningful results, then I certainly would like to publish that, take it to the state level, to the medical journals, and you know, that's a pretty big aspiration, but absolutely, this would be something that would be communicated to the people of Lander County, what the effect is.
Well, how good is the over-the-counter vitamin D supplements?
It is very effective. There's a difference between some of the formulations, synthetic versus a natural extract, liquid versus capsule, but we know that we will get the effect we want when we dose it properly and use a quality supplement.
Since milk products have vitamin D in them naturally...
They do.
How effective is three glasses of milk a day per se, as they claim you should do?
Uh, I don't know what the actual vitamin D dose is in one cup of milk. You give me something to look up, but especially when people are deficient, that's more of a maintenance dose, so that will keep you from going any lower, but if you're sitting at half the level that you would want to be for optimal health, then drinking milk isn't going to bring you up.
Do windows block the vitamin D absorption or not?
Depending on the type of glass, but yes, usually you lose a lot of UV through glass. I have a comment from the public.
So, Amy Nelson, and I have no medical background, what I unfortunately have for some people is a very curious mind and kind of a gestalt way of looking at things, so I do a ton of research. So I'm going to go through my line of thinking, and then you can tell me where I'm way off. So, influenza, the cold, all of these things you described are viral, not bacterial, we understand that. Antibiotics don't work for viruses. My digging through the NIH and the CDC, and I do a lot of research because I'm, because this brain I was given, and it's parasitic. It's parasitic in nature, so what my concern is, is if we're going to do a lot of maybe blood work or analysis on people, I'm very interested in that, I 100% agree with you on this, could we include a parasitic screening along with the vitamin D screening and do a magnesium screening, because I know vitamin D and magnesium have a relationship, without enough magnesium, your vitamin D won't absorb. And the reason I would like to do that is just for the conversation piece. So, when Brandy or the physician, whoever meets with folks after they get this blood work done, and they see their vitamin D levels, they see their magnesium levels, they see all of their levels, they also look at their parasitic load, because according to what I'm learning, parasitic load impacts a lot of disease, a lot of illness, up to ninety-five percent of all of what we're dealing with has a parasitic piece to it. And then people can start learning about nutrition and different things along those lines. So, if we're going to do this, why don't we like, really do it and really inform the people, because it's all voluntary, the people who want to be informed about what's happening internally to them and how they can improve it with sunlight, with diet, with all the different things going on. So again, I just want to start the conversation locally, because then I think when we do publish at a high level, we could knock it out of the park, because we can improve a lot of health and wellness, and people will start taking more responsibility for their health and wellness, because they're being more informed about what's really happening when we eat the food we eat and we don't take care of our bodies.
Yes.
So, I may be way off, but I'm very passionate.
Oh, no, I don't think you're far off the mark at all. Ultimately, we certainly want to have a focus of helping people to take responsibility for their own health. To your idea of testing for parasites, you know, not all parasites, most parasites actually aren't in the blood. There are some indirect tests that you can do in the blood work that will, that will point in the direction of a possible parasitic condition, but it's not a screening test. You have to have the suspicion of what it is that you want to look for and test specifically for that. And then, the vitamin D testing that we're going to be doing, one of the options is to do a blood spot test. So the person gets a kit, takes it home on their own, just takes a little lancet, gets some blood from the finger, puts it on a card and sends it in. So we wouldn't be able to test for anything else but that vitamin D. For magnesium testing, it's probably the case that, you know, about forty percent or so of the general population has a low magnesium status, that really matters. What I talk to my patients that I see, I just suggest that everybody take magnesium, I do, as a good general supplement to take. It's a little harder to test magnesium status as well, it's not a simple blood test, it's a very specialized one. So, you know, as we start the health education process, and we can certainly have that conversation with people, if they want some other advanced testing, we can find a way to set that up. The reason I chose vitamin D is just because it is so straightforward to measure it and to improve the status for people that are deficient, and as I outlined, it has an impact on almost all, essentially all of the chronic health conditions. And to, back to the respiratory virus season, if there were one thing that I could offer to the general public, to the people that I see in my clinic, it's to focus on improving vitamin D status rather than getting a flu shot, rather than getting an RSV shot, rather than getting a COVID shot. The evidence that's out there is just overwhelming, that to improve that one measure of a person's health has an impact on all of those other situations and conditions. And it's easy. Here we have this very straightforward opportunity to measure and to improve, and then to see what kind of outcomes we get once we improve their status.
Dr. Ross, I got a question from Commissioner Chop. He wants to know if there's any side effects or too much vitamin D, and can you have too high of a level?
You can, and that's why we would be starting with only identifying people who are deficient, that below thirty level, and we know what the proper dosing regimen is to get them to optimal. And we know what the proper dosing regimen is to get them to optimal. You would not be able to overdose when that's prescribed or given appropriately. And in years, I've seen one person who was over that safe level in vitamin D during testing, and she had another endocrine problem. So it's possible, but practically speaking, and certainly at the doses that supplements are given, you can't overdose on it.
And then if I recall correctly from our conversation, the underground miners and the people that are less likely in the sunlight, like them are the ones you see the more severe, is that?
Oh, yes. Obviously, the less opportunity you have to get out in the sun, then you're just not going to have the opportunity to make your own. And practically speaking, you can't get enough out of the foods that you eat to address the deficiency. If you're already at a good sufficient level, and you can maintain it through the foods you eat. The main natural food sources are oily fish and mushrooms. Other than that, it's the supplementation in the milk products and some of the other food products. There any other discussion, questions? In that case, I would like to make a motion for the Board of Health to authorize starting this project. Nope, it has to come from somebody else? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion then. I think it's a great idea. I'll make a motion that we, Board of Health, authorizes a program administered by LCCH to offer county-wide screening for vitamin D deficiencies and treatment through supplementation will be offered to all identified with vitamin D deficiencies. All healthcare practitioners within the county will be invited to participate. Measures of health and disease conditions will be gathered at baseline and at six months of follow-up.
Awesome, okay.
All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Commissioner Chop voted aye.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Are we done?
No other items for discussion? Is there any other discussion from the board or members of the public?
You will notify us at the next meeting, or when the next meeting will be?
Yes, sir. I will do that. Well, with that then, I'd like to move, drop, and move to adjourn. Does that come from another? Yep, move to adjourn.
Okay, so we're adjourned. So we're gonna take, so before we reconvene our commission meeting, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Thank you, Dr. Ross.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so we're gonna jump back to item three, now that we have our Commissioner G here. For possible action to appoint the Landry County Commissioners to the following various 2024 Advisory Boards. And we'll just, we'll go ahead and we'll just take one at a time. Is that fine? Or should we read the whole thing in, Bill? How should we do it?
I don't think you have to read every single one.
Okay, so we'll just start with A, Category 1. Number 1, Landry County Board of Equalization. I currently serve on that board, and I'd like to continue on that board. And I don't think that there's an alternate on that board. So we can go through, do the appointments, and then make the motion?
The reason I'm saying that is because you're reading each one in as you do them, so that it does all get read into the record.
Okay, and then at the end, we can just make one motion to accept the noted changes or?
As long as everybody's in agreement.
Yeah, well, I would call a vote for it, so for sure. Okay, so number 2, Landry County Convention and Tourism Authority. Yeah, Kathy is on that, and I am the alternate, and I'll stay that. 3, Landry County Debt Management Commission. I serve on that board, and I'll continue to serve on that board. And there is no alternate. 4, Landry County Planning Commission, currently, okay, there's no commissioner that's designated for that board.
I'll take that one, since I'm not going to be on that board anymore.
Right, so is the Planning Commission, do we have to have a commissioner set on that board or not? Because I don't think it ever has been that way.
I'd have to defer to that.
No, we've had, I know that there's been commissioners on the Planning Commission before, but I don't know that it's required.
Right, that's fine. But do you like to serve on that one?
Sure.
Good. 5 is Landry County Regional Transportation Committee. I think that was, I'm on it, and I'd stay on it, and J.R., you were the?
Yeah, I'm the backup on that.
Okay, and then we need one other commissioner to pass you away, said on it as well.
How often does it meet?
It's only quarterly meetings.
And you're just a backup?
No, it's three commissioners, three voting.
Oh, okay. I can do that one.
Okay. So B, Category 2, Landry County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife.
I'd like to do that if nobody else is on it.
And again, this is, no commissioner has been designated for that board. Thomas, Commissioner Thomas was nominated to attend, and you'd like to take that, Kathy?
Yeah.
Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. So then we'll move to C, Category 3, Airport, Austin Airport Advisory Board. Would you like that, G?
Yep, I'll take that one.
All right. 2, Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board.
I'm on that.
J.R.'s on that, and I'm the alternate, so we'll keep it that way. 3, Local Emergency Planning Commission, left seat.
I'll stay on that one.
Kathy, and then an alternate was Commissioner Clark. Did Mike take that as an alternate? Kathy, did you know? Who was the alternate? Mike's on it?
Yeah.
Who? Mike is on it. Okay. So we'll leave that as is. So then we have 4, Landry County, no, let me see here, sorry. We just did left seat, right? So 4, Landry County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission?
I'm on that one.
Okay, and so you, who was the alternate on that?
Mike.
Mike, okay. Thank you. So then we'll move into D, Category 4, Landry County Conservation District.
I'll do that one.
Well, I think we have a commission-appointed person.
Okay, then.
I believe that's Wayne Nebiker. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
And then 2, Landry County Hospital District. I think Mike says on that one.
Yep.
And who's the alternate?
J.R.
Who?
J.R.
Okay, perfect. 3, Landry County Safety Committee. Mike's on that? Is there an alternate, Kathy, on that?
No.
Okay. 4, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority?
I'm on that, and Patsy was on it.
I can do that.
You wanna sit as the alternate on that?
Yeah.
Okay. 5, Department of Energy Board of Representatives. I think I sit on that. I'm not sure. Is there an alternate to that one?
It's vacant, I think it was.
Huh?
It's vacant. I think it was Patsy.
Oh, yeah, so Patsy was. I can take the, I'll take that role, and then I don't know if somebody wants to be an alternate to that? I don't think they've had a meeting for quite some time.
Okay, I can do alternate then.
Yeah, okay.
Since my husband works for ORMAT with the geothermal, does that have any effect?
No.
No?
Let me see, D. I don't know, Bill, I shouldn't be answering that question.
I suppose it could come up, but I crossed that bridge when we came to it.
Okay.
I can't imagine it'd be something that would prevent you from being on it.
Anything, you should just have to disclose the relationship, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so 6, Humboldt River Basin Water Authority?
I'm on that.
And Kathy, you're the?
Alternate.
Okay. 7, State Land Use Planning Advisory Committee?
I'm on it, but I'd rather give it to somebody else.
See, we had, J.R. was on it. Let's see, State Land, anybody else want that? Looks like you got it still. Who's the alternate on it, Kathy? Who's the alternate?
Um, no, no alternate.
Do we need an alternate for that one? No? It doesn't show in here. Okay, we'll move to 8, Nevada Association of Counties, NACO.
That was Patsy, I remember that.
Yeah, Patsy.
How often do they meet?
They meet?
There's a fair amount involved on there.
Yeah.
They meet at least quarterly, but they're just plain doing things all the time.
Who would like to take that?
I will.
D, all right, thank you, D. Do we need an alternate on that one?
It wasn't stated, but we can.
NACO, okay. Doesn't specify, but we could. Does anybody wanna be an alternate?
A lot of these meetings are virtual as well.
I'm surprised.
All right, so hearing none, I'll move to 9, Nevada Works.
I'm on that one.
Okay, and Kathy, you are down as an alternate?
That's fine.
Okay, and then 10 is Pool Pack. Who sat on that?
You.
I did? So I'll stay on that one then. Thank you. Okay, so that's all of them. Do we have a motion to accept?
I might go motion that we accept all of the Commissioner-settled place of boards.
All seconded.
Have discussed, okay, and you'll second. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. And then maybe, Bert, can we have somebody staff just print us a new one of these, so?
They do that?
Kathy, please, and make sure, every, make sure I have a current one in the pack.
I'll take that. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All right. So it looks like number 7. For discussion of possible action to get direction to move forward with a site license agreement with Landry County and Sky Fiber Internet to build a new repeater site to serve the community with high-speed internet on county property above the VM Mountain, and for the board to approve the specific property description. So this is, so is it right, like on the very top of VM Mountain? Is that where we're looking at?
No, so the actual site that they're looking at is directly behind the shooting range. They're currently on Nevada land's property up there. If you guys have seen that, kind of that trailer that sits up on top of that. And they wanna move that over a few hundred yards closer.
Okay, so they're currently out there, but they're just, we're getting them off private onto, or?
Yeah, I think, yep, that's what they're asking.
County property. Right, I got you, okay. Any questions? Any public comment or questions on it?
Are we charging them rent?
Good comment.
Yes.
We don't have a contract on anything yet, so I mean, obviously, they need something.
Yeah?
So this was initially, the item was to get the approval to move forward, so we could draft the contract because we needed the property detail language.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that it's not a done deal until it's a done deal.
So I don't think we necessarily, we need, we don't need access to direction.
This is just giving us direction to move forward, and we'll bring the contract back.
Okay, so you guys are directed. Thank you. And then H, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, creating an ordinance in regards to garbage trucks spilling trash. This is something Commissioner Chop asked to be on the agenda. Does she wanna speak to this? Or, because we deferred it last meeting because he wasn't here, so.
I'm not seeing, he's muted, he's muted right now, so.
I don't, he's gone.
No, he just texted me that he's muted.
Oh. Mr. Chop, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Is there too much background noise to proceed with this? Do we need to table it till I get back to the next meeting?
Yeah, Mike, we, we'll do that. I just, I didn't know, it'd probably be better if you were here to speak to us, so yes.
Before we probably table it, Mike, I want you to be aware of- Because you've been out of country, you're not easy to get hold of. We do have an ordinance already, 8.16.130. Okay, and that requires, well, I'll read it real quick. It's very short. Responsibility of solid waste collectors. Solid waste collectors shall be responsible for the collection of solid waste from the point of collection to the transportation vehicle, provided the solid waste has, was stored in compliance with Sections 816040, 816050, and 816060 of this chapter. Any spillage or blowing litter caused as a result of the duties of the solid waste collector shall be collected and placed- Hold on.
Muted. Unmuted.
And placed in the transportation vehicle by the solid waste collector. Okay, and then the next ordinance is, all solid waste transported by individuals, commercial or industrial facilities shall be in covered containers or trucks, so that none of the material being transported shall spill on the public rights away. So I don't know what more we need. They're responsible for picking their stuff up.
Yep. Mike, did you, did you hear that ordinance? Is there anything that you think that?
Yes. Well, that, I mean, it covers it, I guess, the discussion, it'll have to be withdrawn to see about enforcement of it and what the, because that's what it was. It was the garbage trucks and also just uncovered trash loads. I mean, when you move a couch, you don't have to cover it, but man, the trash going out to the dump just ruins everything. You know, it seems like it just degrades. How nice everybody puts the effort in to keep the town. And it don't take that much either. So, no, I'm fine. If there was an ordinance, I didn't see it, so I think it covers everything. I have the questions on. It's just more of where the enforcement comes from.
Okay, well, all right, thanks, Mike.
I might have a solution.
Yes, Amy.
So because we pick up trash on the weekends, which most of you guys know, we're able to do it on this side of the road, the east side, because there's a trail. Because legally, I can't be off the side of the road on anything over 25 miles an hour. So I can't pull off the side of the road on that main strip. But we're able to pick up trash on this side, because I can go on that little trail. If the county could put a trail on the opposite side, on that last strip, then I can pull onto that trail, and then I can, we can pick up all of that garbage. Because it's so unsightly, and it's embarrassing for people coming into this town to see. But because of the speed limit, I can't just pull over and get it on this side. So that would solve it, if you could go out and get somebody to make it, just so I can get that truck out there.
So that's an end dot right-of-way, so we would have to put in?
Okay, we do that.
That.
Amy, would we be putting kids at risk, though?
Not if I go off the road. I have to be off the road.
Okay. Is it public comment time yet?
Yeah.
I didn't really hear it all the way, but Andrew Warwood for the record. So I just wanted to make mention that the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints this year went out there on their own, starting from the bottom of the overpass, and hiked all the way on both sides of the road to the ends of the softball fields, is what they could do. And they gathered probably 13 bags of trash, and that's not even from the softball fields to the turnoff there. So if this is coming up, I just, there are other groups in the community who aren't very happy with the garbage situation we have out there as well, have been trying on their own to do things. Amy does a lot with the youth, but the church we went out this year to, and tried to do that. So it would be nice to see something that could be done there. A lot of people are concerned about that issue.
Thank you, and much appreciated, too. And that brings the thought of, it's like, we get a lot of people that come forth to ask money from taxpayers in this commission. That could be one thing. It's like, yeah, we're willing to help, but how can you help your community? Because it's taxpayers' dollars that we're giving you, and that could be one thing. It's like, we have trash out there, you know, go out, gather, and then come back and address the board. And I mean, it's just an idea, so.
Isn't there a liability on that, too?
So I think that there's a couple things there. We only have so much authority. We can't approve things within end dots right-of-way. They have to, they have to be the ones to do that, which we wanna make sure, probably clear that with our legal on how far we can push that on end dot, so.
But you can have them go out on the dump road, because that's not end dot.
Well, most certainly. But the, between them two right-of-way fences, that's all end dot. And I think that's what we're speaking of right now. But as far as the dump road and everything, yeah, most certainly.
The county keeps the dump road fairly clean.
In Wyoming, they have this policy, if you're- In Wyoming, they have this policy, if you're coming out to the dump, if you don't have tarp or strapped, you get a fine. They won't let you into the dump site. They give you a fine, it's like a ten dollar fine. So we described it the hard way.
Alright, if there's no more discussion, I guess we'll just, uh, leave this item alone. Is there any more on it? Is there any other public comment or questions? Okay, we'll move on.
Brian, can we table it one more time, and, uh, so, I'd like to have a discussion with Ron and see also. My worry with, I, I like Amy's idea, but my worry is putting the kids at risk.
He, he would like to table it? Okay. Alright, so we're gonna head, just, uh, put this item back on our future agenda. You bet. Okay, thanks Mike. Uh, we'll move into item nine. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the renewal of the YESCO Outdoor Media Ground Lease Agreements in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per year, per contract with the terms of January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-three. We currently have six, and they are as follows, A, location three, four, zero, three, five, south half of section twenty-six, township thirty-two north, range forty-five east, I eighty point five seven miles east of mile marker, uh, ten SS, what's SS? All these acronyms. Subsection, ten subsection?
Possibly. I didn't write it.
I'll just read it in, as, what I was written here, so B, location three, four, zero, four, two, south half of section twenty-six, township thirty-two north, range forty-five east, I eighty point five seven miles east of mile marker ten, SS. C, location three, four, zero, zero, nine, dash, section twenty-six, township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, dash, three nine oh, dash, oh seven. D, location three, four, zero, zero, eight, dash, for s- section twenty-six, township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, three nine, oh, oh seven. E, location three, four, zero, zero, section seven, section twenty-six, township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN zero eight, three nine, zero, zero seven. And F, location three, four, zero, zero, six, section twenty-six, township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN zero eight, three nine, zero, zero seven. So, that amount of fifteen hundred, we've increased the amount? How much did we increase it?
Five hundred a year, it was a thousand a year per lease?
We took into account for inflation.
Uh, that was all YESCO actually, they put the increase in there, so.
Okay. Mike, do, is there any questions on it?
I just want to point out, we don't have a way of getting out from under this, um, easily. It, it gives lots of reasons YESCO can pull out, but it doesn't give any reasons we can pull out.
Well, I think...
Having said that, the current one is, was signed by Mickey Yarborough, which gives you an idea how long ago it was. And we haven't had any problems with these people, so if you want to go ahead, I'm okay with it, but I just want to point that out.
I, I don't know necessarily if we were to put a, a section in there giving us an out, if they'd want to put that investment or continue that investment there, knowing that we could pull it out from them at any time, so. I'm fine with it leaving it how it is, anybody have any questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Public have any questions or comments on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of YESCO Outdoor Media ground lease agreement. With all the changes that we made.
Okay.
All seconded.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Mike, we'll move into item ten. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, a grant request for Battle Mountain High School Marketing Program in an amount of seven thousand dollars.
Um, Lake and Sullivan for the record, this was submitted to me from the Battle Mountain High School Marketing Program. Um, it would come out of our miscellaneous grants, and there's ten thousand budgeted in there this year, we haven't used any of it for anything so far.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to add?
Um, which I think is a wonderful idea, um, it really is a really good idea, the only issue is it goes, then we put it, the, the county goes in direct competition by de-granting this month, this might go. The county goes in direct competition with people in town who already do these businesses. There's a handful of them who we already have it, which I think it's a wonderful business idea, and, um, for you guys, but as far as us granting the money, then we go in competition with local businesses, and we, um, ridiculed other people for doing that, and I, it's hard to, um, although I know you guys are trying to make money, and I respect that, um, I don't know if, if, if we're going in, if we're going in to direct competitions with local businesses.
Can I have a brief overview of what you're doing?
Yeah, so I'm, my name's Cory Warwood, I'm the assistant principal at the high school, and so this year, we started a business marketing program, and so we used, we spent forty-five thousand dollars in grant money on, on purchasing screen printing and embroidery machines. Um, so the idea is, we wanted to start more electives, and we didn't have any business marketing, it's a CTE course, and so we need to have a business for the kids to be able to have a product, sell, create business plans, things like that. And we had the idea that we should be creating our own Longhorn gear, um, currently, we're outsourcing that, whether that's to local, um, businesses or to not local businesses, um, so, even like the jacket I'm wearing, sports gears, they're, they're warmups, just Longhorn Battle Mountain High School sweaters, anything like that, we are just buying, we're not getting any revenue back, so we thought what a great experience for our students to be able to create the business plan, but also to build revenue for the high school, and so that's where the business marketing idea came from. So currently, we do have the class started, they're really in the classroom right now, they're learning all the business principles, they're learning about GDP, um, how to make a business plan, everything like that. We do have the equipment, we've had myself and another teacher go and get trained on how to do the screen printing. There are a few things that we are missing before the kids can get in and start doing the actual process of making the shirts and then selling them, and so that's where we filled out the grant, coming to you guys. What we're asking for specifically is money to purchase screens for the screen printing machine. Um, the gear itself, we do have some gear, but additional gear and then a printer that will allow us to print larger um, transparencies to make the screens for the screen printing, so. Um, it is a self-sustaining, because we have used grant money to purchase the initial equipment, the forty-five thousand dollars. Um, and so this is just to help us purchase more gear, more screens, and then that printer.
Okay, so do you have like your business licenses and your sales tax and, and, and all that, I mean, you know, if you're teaching them business and how they're gonna go into business, they need to learn everything you have to do, and you're like, kind of circumventing all that.
So with us being, um, the school, we're able to do that, we're able to, to, to do that, but in the business marketing class, they do learn about those principles.
And where's the money gonna go afterwards?
So, it's gonna go back into the program, so initially, it's going to fund itself so it can continue to buy more gear. And then the money will go in, any extra money will stay into our school, it'll go towards athletics or any other clubs, if, if they need, they can withdraw from that account.
So there's no sales tax or anything collected?
Hmm. Yeah.
I know, but it's still, it's like...
Well, I share the same concern Kathy has, you're saying, we're, we're assisting setting somebody up that competes with a local business that does the same thing. It's twofold, it's, I can appreciate what you're doing Cory, for sure I can. The other thing is that this commission has been more than gracious with the Landmark County children in this community, and I, maybe you can help me. What, what have we, we've granted over the last couple years, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah.
So it's, my, my point would be, at what point does the school district or your board of elected officials start budgeting for some of these things that the school and these kids needs? Rather than having to come to the commission to ask for it?
So with...
Were you invited to come here?
Yeah, with all due respect, we've been invited each time we come, and so, um, like we did with the sponsorship, it wasn't our idea, we were invited to come, and so this would just be a beneficial thing, um, try to build a bridge between the county and ourselves. If you guys say no, that's fine, we have other plans in place, but this is, this is something that was suggested that we should try to do, and so that's where the grant application came from, it was suggested for us to do.
So I just want to clarify that, just, and, and not to be confrontational, um, but, and this is an open board, we welcome it to anybody, when I was asked, if, if you're referring to me as being the invite, when, when I was asked, you know, hey, what, how do you feel about this, I said, that's not the decision I make, that's one that you can, that's a request you can make to the commission.
Absolutely.
So hopefully that is, uh, I just don't want that to be as if we set you guys up for failure here, because is all we can do is offer an open invite to anybody to come, put their presentation here, and then the decision's made.
Which we understand.
Okay, so I just, I just want that clarification.
I want to remind the commission as well, they came once before, and you guys asked them to put together a business plan and bring it back before you, and so I think that's why they came back, cause they hadn't filled out a grant request then, and you guys suggested that they do that, and they create a plan, so you guys could see where the money was gonna be spent.
Let me ask you this Cory, is there something where a business that could be created, some sort of a model to where which, when you're teaching these kids that they're actually giving back to Landmark County, like, like everybody in Landmark County wins, whatever that would be, I don't know. But doesn't necessarily go into competition with current businesses that we have in our community? Because I could be behind something like that, supporting something where all Landmark County citizens win, you know, it's like we clean up our, our town, whatever that might be, I, I don't know. Just a question.
Right, um, I don't know exactly what that would look like, I do know our school, um, we've partnered a lot with the rec center, doing the, the food drive, um, we've, we've done a lot of drives, we, we try to get out and do community service, our kids get out, um, and they're, they're doing work, and so, I don't know exactly how that would work specifically with the business program, if we get this grant, if there's something we have to do in return for that, but, um, I do know the community does ask quite often, where, where can we get Longhorn gear, where can we get Longhorn gear, and there isn't like a set place they can get Longhorn gear, or when the kids do fundraisers, they're outsourcing to places that are not even within the state, and so there's online sales, and so they have to wait, and so it just is taking time for, for our citizens to get that gear that they want to wear when they go to the games, or just out and about.
So your, so your local, so your gear that you're having made currently, do you use a local business to make that gear, or you outsource, or do you go outside?
Currently, we don't, because it's usually through fundraisers, and so when the students are selling gear, it's because they're trying to make money for their club. So one of the, the big fundraisers that we do at the beginning of the year is our leadership kids, they sell the gear through an online platform, that gives them the most profit, that gives them the money, so that they can hold all the events that our students have. And so when it comes down to it, it comes down to dollars and just efficiency, the online sales is really easy. Um, if we are able to print our own gear, and if that gear is, um, purchased with grant money, that's money that we don't have to pay back. And so those margins can be bigger for those kids, so they can, um, make a bigger profit, um, and be able to get more money into their accounts, so they can have the events that they do.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm processing here. Um, uh, because I like, I, cause I really do like the idea, I just don't like the, um, to end up going into competition, and I don't know what the answer, because one of my comments were to you guys as far as figuring out something to raise money on, oh, well, here you are back here, do, and you've done that, and you've put your plan together, and I think it's a actual, it's a wonderful idea, but I don't want to see kids to lose, um, so it's like between a rock and a hard spot, cause I know that when we, when you guys came to us for the continuing, or, um, dual credits, we didn't do that, and, which, I know AT&T did, and did a wonderful job with you guys uh, with doing that, so I don't know what the answer is as far as not going into competition with the, with the other businesses, and I don't know what the answer, I, I don't know what the answer, because I am, because I do think it is an absolute wonderful idea, and you did just exactly what was asked of you, and so, um, if, I don't know, I don't know how we fix this issue, um, whether we contact the local businesses that you don't use already, and, uh, you know, you contact them and go, hey, this is what we're doing, um, and that we're gonna stick it to only Longhorn gear, we're not, cause this, and that's where the problem is, is if you stick it to, to your group things, and the Longhorn gear is one thing, but if you start broadening out into doing other things for other people, then that's where it becomes a problem. And you're going into direct competition, cause if you're not using them now, and they're doing it all online, is one thing, but if you start doing different things, and I thought when I read in there, that was one of the ideas, that you could do outside businesses, which is the idea too, obviously, to get outside businesses, then you take away from, you know, the ones who are here, and so I don't know what what the answer is to that.
Let me ask you this Cory, have you, have you approached any of the mines?
Um, so there is a mine grant, and so whenever we ask for money from the grinds, we, from the mines, we go through this grant process. Um, their grants, they, we have not, we have not gone to them yet, because we've used them for other things. And so, um, we've written in a lot of grants for them, which they do, um, grant, but for this one, we haven't, just because we, we have gone to them quite often.
And what about just local fundraising, you know, like, I mean, I, I just kind of recall back when I was in school, like, we had the athletics, uh, what was it, the boosters club? That did a lot of like fundraising to support athletics, I don't know if that's currently something that's going on, uh, I just remembered like a lot of run-a-thons, hit-a-thons, car washes, bake sales to try to...
Our students are fundraising, so we have a lot of different clubs, and they run their own fundraisers, we have our athletics, um, sponsorship that we've gotten a lot of success with, with some of the businesses, and so those things are currently happening.
Nevada Gold Mines does have the, um, and Sarah, I know, I'm sure you have a contact with Sarah, for those business plans where you put in, and they start, they get, you know, those grants that they do.
Yeah.
I think it's up to five thousand or whatever for your business plan.
Mm-hmm.
That would be, uh, I think, a great way to go into that, because they've been wonderful with people.
Yeah.
And you already have all your stuff done, so, um, utilizing them for that, um, grant, because like you were, at the end of last year, they still had all their money left, because nobody had actually put in for that specific grant.
Yeah, the mines do a great job supporting the schools, and, and we do, we, we fill out the grants, and they're, they work really well with us, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you can, but have you actually got on the agenda for the school board and asked the actual school themselves?
So with the way that the district funds work, so this is, this would be a program, a CTE program that's funded through grants, and so the school does, district does not have grants for that, so.
Are the kids getting credit for the class?
They are, yep.
See, that's, that doesn't make any sense to me, and that might be just a lack of my knowledge on that, if the kids are actually getting, are getting a credit for it, then it should still be something that the school should be able to assist in, because they're receiving credit for it.
And ultimately, um, we just filled out this grant, because it's what we were asked to do, and so, you know, we got, we gotta go for it, and if it...
Yeah, no, absolutely.
If you guys are willing, that's great, and if, if not, that's okay too, it's just something that, you know, if the money is there, and you guys have that money that you can put towards something, then, then, then we should go for it as the school, um, and if not, that's, that's okay too.
No, and I agree, other than the direct competition part is just, um, the, the, the hard part to swallow for our businesses who do, um, you know, pay the, there for their licenses and stuff like that, and then they're saying they're giving back, you know, something that's going in direct competition with us and undercutting us, which you would, because you're able to do it, because your costs are lower, and so it's just, it's, like I said, a double edged sword, and I think it's a wonderful idea, and I don't, like I said, I don't know what the answer is, you know, how to make that work, but if you're gonna do outside business other than the school, um, then that's where it gets, you start having problems.
Cory, I, I have a question, is there, um, is this something that other schools are doing throughout the state, like this is, this is an uncommon practice, like?
Hmm, no, a lot of schools do print their own gear, um, I can't think of any specifically, but I have heard of other schools doing it, um, outside of the state as well, um, my cousin teaches in a high school, and I told her I, I, our idea, and she's like, oh yeah, like, we've been doing that for years, and, um, so a lot of schools do print their own gear, and that's when we get asked, where do we get, where do we get Longhorn gear, where do we get Longhorn gear, and we don't have an answer, because we don't have a supply of just sitting Longhorn gear, when other schools do.
And it, and it's solely, I think to, to Kathy's point, it's solely for Longhorn gear, correct, I mean, is there, is there something in there that you guys have that would venture outside, I mean, you guys, the kids aren't gonna start printing Nike clothes or, obviously, right, cause there's a patent on that, but...
So, so you, you can, you can buy like a Nike, like this is Under Armour, right, and so it's been printed on, so you can, you can buy it and print it, because you've purchased it from that company for printing, and so what we would buy is if we were to buy Nike or Under Armour shirts, then, then we've purchased them for printing on, and so.
And so that's the thing, only, regardless of what, what the brand says on the shirt, like, you're not going to, for the Out Club, start doing Out Club shirts for them, you know how they have, whatever they have on the back of them, you go out and venture out. You go out and venture out, there's somebody, whomever it is, who prints those shirts. You guys aren't going to go to that, if you're going to only print longhorn gear, I don't have a problem with it. If you are not currently utilizing anyone in town now, but if you're going to venture out to broaden your market, that's where the problem is.
And, and I see exactly what you're saying, and I also don't want to put any reins on it, because I do want those students to understand what business is like and, and competition is part of that business and be able to go out and find new clients. Now, with what we're starting, is it, it would be longhorn gear, but I also don't want to put chains on it, saying, kids, we cannot do this, because we received this seven thousand dollar grant, we're not allowed to venture outside. So just to be transparent and honest, that's-
Absolutely, and I appreciate that.
How many printing companies are there here?
Um, we have like three or four.
And I would think, if, if you could fundraise it some other way than public, like, uh, county, you know, just public's dollars, then it's, you know, kitty bar the doors, you do whatever you want with it, you fundraise it, it's your idea, right? It's just that's, I think that's the biggest issue, that I'm hearing, is that we're actually kind of setting you up to like maybe compete with some local businesses and it's just, I don't know if it's a good idea.
And I believe Commissioner Chop asked me, uh, he might have some comments, we unmuted him.
Okay, uh, Mike, can you hear us, do you have some comments?
Oh, there was, is, was there any discussion or intent to do? I mean, competing business hugely would be Letterman's jackets, so on so forth. Is that a plan, has, has that been discussed in the business plan? Because the t-shirts, knowing Mike Donnelly very well, who's a large distributor, I mean, he can't compete with online, I mean, the online stores, where you guys basically pull mostly from that. So the business competition I see is, is, is foreign and out of state. But it, I mean, is it something, you know, for the local side? Is, is that something that, that would become an option, because that would affect local or, I mean, that's going to put stipulations on it, that you're not going to produce these three or four items, because that does compete with the local business.
And so, when, when we are ordering, um, gear, it is mainly through Donnelly Sports, which is out of Idaho. Um, and then the one, it escapes me what it's called, but it's not local, it's outside, the one that the leadership does. Um, and so I do-
I'm going to give it to you at a cheaper cost, but what about like Letterman's jackets and that? Because that's going to put a strain on-
Letterman's jackets go through-
Because most of them are done in town.
Um, I believe Letterman jackets go through Jostens technically, that's what's advertised at the school. Now, what parents and families choose how to get their Letterman jackets, if they go locally, that's, that's totally fine. I do know our volleyball team, I have a shirt that's, uh, volleyball, has my name on it and stuff. She went locally to get those done, but I do know that when people are selling longhorn gear, we don't see any profit of it at, at all, it goes directly to that company. Um, and so that's just something that's been happening, and so we're, we're, we're getting no revenue from those sales whatsoever, the high school is not. Um, only when they're doing fundraisers, and that goes to a direct club or a student, um, organization.
Mike, let me ask you, I have a question.
But it's funny, I mean, a lot of the, lot of the local Letterman's jackets are being done by a town, a town business. I purchased three of them myself.
And I don't see this-
What I'm saying is, is, is kind of off of Kathy, is, i- it's hard to give money to that, I mean, when, if, if, if you're going to, if, if the plan is to take it away, then it's like, I think, I believe it was Burt Sett or Brian that, you know, then we'd need to look at other fundraisers to where, if you're going to take that type of business, you know, you're going to compete in that type of business.
Mike, can you hear me? Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me ask you this question, and I'm drawing on, uh, your experiences being a, uh, a trustee of the Lander County School Board. Is if something came like this in front of you as a board member, would you be, would you be in favor of supporting something like this to help your, to help this class do what they were doing?
If there's funding for it, yes, both. But, like I said, I, I do have the worry of, like I said, I bought three local, I, I bought three Letterman jackets from, uh, the embroidery shop in town. Cheaper than Jostens, and basically I believe higher quality, you know? I don't, I, I get nervous with taking away somebody's livelihood. I, I believe in the uniforms, because the online sales is, it does nothing for nobody. It's just, it, you know, they, they, they get it so cheap and, and so it, they're, they're making, they're making a profit off of our profit.
Maybe you guys could look at funding a portion of their request, they asked for forty-seven hundred for the apparel, just to buy, you know, shirts and pants and things like that, and then make them come up with a different solution for the printer.
And, and I think what Chop was asking is, he, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, um, he was asking if you were going to go in competition and do Letterman's jackets.
I don't foresee us doing Letterman jackets, because of the material that they're on. So with the screen printing itself, we're not going to be screen printing those. And with the embroidery machine, Letterman jackets are, they're thick, I don't think that our equipment can do that.
I think that's what I got out of what he was asking, he was thinking, you're just doing screen printing.
That, that, that's where I see the local competition.
And Letterman jackets, those, that's a, that's a family thing, not every kid is going to get a Letterman jacket, and Letterman jackets are very expensive. And, and so it's not something that the school has ever mass produced, or everyone gets one, or, or anything like that, that's solely on families, such as the classrooms.
But the people that are willing to pay are willing to pay.
Right.
And that's a profit margin for a business.
Well, I think, I think, Corey, I don't see you-
We don't get nothing from Jostens. And, and one more question. With this donation, this was initially bought for the sponsorship. So i- i- if this donation was to come about, is this donation also count for, uh, uh, it's not the boosters, but, uh, the, because eventually was the business plan, I, I understood it was, you know, the initial request was a donation to help with, um, funding and, and getting labeled for the sponsor, so Lander County receives that, so it's also, you know, it, it's also promotional. Or has it gone separate, is this separate?
This would, this would be separate, because those would go into two different accounts. So the longhorn sponsorship goes into the athletic account, this is for a class and the marketing program, so those are two separate accounts. Now, um, what the money from the marketing class, the revenue that we would build there, would first go into funding the business class. Now, if we end up making even more money, then we could set that into an account, um, possibly just like a longhorn account, or share it with athletics, to where we're able to fund the pay-to-plays and possibly class fees, things like that. But initially, it, it would be completely separate, because they're two different accounts. Does that make sense?
Because I thought the initial was to help pay for these motels and that, that was such an added expense.
Right, exactly, and so with the business marketing class, the first, first priority of that revenue is going to be for that business class, to keep it self-sustaining, and so we don't have to ask for any more money, so it can pay for itself. Anything extra, then we would share it with athletics and possibly other student organizations. Um, and so that it can pay for hotel, travel, and that pay-to-pay, pay-to-play fee. But initially, the revenue needs to pay for the business marketing class to keep it self-sustaining. With that being said, it's also a CTE course, and so there is a lot of grant money. Um, so our ad mechanics class and our health science classes, those are grant-funded, and so each year they have to apply for grants to keep their materials coming in, and so if for some reason we don't make money, we can, we can work with the state, um, to get funding from that, um, to, to help fund that. But that's where that money's going to go to, it's not going to go to athletics, it's going to go to the business marketing program.
So, Mike, are you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, thank you, Corey.
Yep.
Okay, uh, so I'm just going to state, I'd like to see you try to raise it from your, get it from your own school district, but I also had this thought, have you ever reached out to like some of these local businesses, say, hey, look, this is what we want? We have people coming to us to say, we can't find longhorn gear anywhere. Would you be willing to work with this, this is what we're doing? To where you, if we refer the people to you and you print these, that you give a proceed to us, where there's ten, fifteen dollars a shirt, whatever it is, where you are making money off the referral, I mean, that's business as well, that happens all the time, right? Cooperation, synergies, just an idea.
Yeah.
And then you're including local business in it, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
What percentage are you putting back in?
What do you mean by that?
Well, you said, um, you're setting it up by placing funds generated through the sales back into the program. Are you putting a hundred percent of that sale back in there, or are you taking those out?
No, it'd be a hundred percent going into it. We, we don't make-
Huh? It should be self-funding.
Yes.
What are you charging for the shirts?
Um, it would depend on what the shirt initially costs, because the students will have to figure that out, figure out their margins, and what percentage they would want to make back. So it depends on what the students and their teacher comes up with, their specific prices, as their class goes on.
Well, like if you sold to the rec club, what would you sell a shirt to them for? Are you selling it to them wholesale, so that they can turn around and sell it? Or are they, are you selling, instead of ten ninety-nine a shirt to them wholesale, are you selling it to them fifteen ninety-nine and then they just give them out?
Um, I think it would just depend on what the students would want to do with that class, and so it'd be really student-driven and, and how they create their business plans.
So this is actually just initially starting your business, is what you're asking?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We haven't started selling anything, we, we have the equipment, we have the room set up, um, but we haven't started any printing, um, yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, so no questions, is there a motion? Okay, motion bouncing. All right, well, thank you, Corey. We'll move into item eleven. Uh, for discussion of possible action to give direction to the department on how the board would like to proceed with the fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget submission and any projects the board would like to include in the budget workshop.
Um, Lake and Sullivan, for the record, I included in your backup just the budget packet that I send out every year. This is just a, a draft, I haven't sent it out to the departments yet. Um, and I didn't know if there was anything specific you guys wanted to include in it this year, if there's any specific projects you as a commission want to see in the budget workshop.
I don't per se, Dee, is there anything you'd like to see?
I would like to see video actually put in in, in Austin, so that when they're doing presentations and things like that, you're, when you're sitting there in Austin and you're listening on the phone, number one, you can barely hear it, and number two, you have no clue what's going on. We have this huge monster TV setup in the break room with the round table, but it just sits there, there's nothing to it. I would like to see the follow-up on it, and so that people can actually come in and watch what's going on, instead of having to go on afterwards, we're already on camera.
We're actually working with a new company right now, Granicus, for the recording system and stuff in here, so we can look at getting video feed down there, it might not happen by budget workshop, but we can certainly try.
Yeah, but I just, I think that would be very beneficial for the people, you know, like, like, at first I thought Kingston too, but Kingston can come into Austin for now, because they- What was that?
But I'm wondering if we can stream the video here to there.
What, um, program do you use for, you're not using like Zoom or?
I'm using GoToMeeting.
GoToMeeting, yeah, you should be able to stream that.
But, but that's on her laptop, that's not in here, it's not in these cameras.
Right, so you have a laptop down there that's also set up and you can set the link up and, and they can tie it in?
It's, it wouldn't be streaming this room though, it would be facing Liz, is what I'm saying. These cameras are jabs, and that's what the recorder's office uses to stream the, the meeting.
But I just, I think it'd be beneficial, there's a lot of people that come in to watch, to listen to the commissioner meeting down there, and it can be very frustrating.
Yeah, I think honestly, I, I agree with you, I, I think it'd be a great idea, but I don't know if it's something that can actually happen prior to, I think it's, I think we've, we've discussed in prior meetings, it's heading in that direction, to where there's more of a connect for everybody that's listening to our meetings.
Like, when we go there, I can take this and connect it to that TV and then it'll go, but unless there's another way for when I'm running GoTo.
Can you put it up on a Promethean board?
So I think that this item though, is for things like, like this that we would like to budget for, we're asking the commission for direction on things to put in the budget, so we can put something in the budget if needed, if we haven't come up with a solution between now and budget. So that's kind of what this item is for, is if you as individuals, like commissioners, like, you know, say, hey, we, we would like this done, then if we don't have it in the budget now to make it happen, then we'll, we'll budget for that and start doing some research on it now, to where we can come to you guys with good budget numbers. Because oftentimes we get in budget and then ideas pop out, and we haven't had time to go research that and get good budget numbers to come back and work off of. So that's kind of more what this item is for.
Robert, did you have one?
Um, there is the capability to live stream through GoToMeeting Zoom, this system, but it's going to depend on the system software, so that's one of the things you have to ask about the interface between those live streaming services. And much of those companies should have that capability.
Thank you. Because I use Zoom and GoToboth, and we can stream.
Okay, other than that, I have nothing.
Any other things, any projects, I mean, it's, uh?
Um, with, since this isn't on the agenda, I really can't discuss it, but I, at the last planning commission meeting, the county came in and they asked for variances or whatever, or building permits to put in, two warehouse-type buildings to store like the Christmas decorations and the different things here. I would like to have one of those put down in Austin.
That's exactly what this item's for.
And I would like to see it put probably either, I mean, we have what, fifteen acres down there? And we just got crap piled on most of it? Old junk that they haven't auctioned off or done anything with, it's, it's kind of an eyesore down there, I'll be serious. I'd like to see a warehouse put down there, and then we could put the Christmas decorations and a couple of, a lot of the stuff that's stored up there in the old shop building. Have it all moved down there and clean that area up some.
Okay, so you got that noted?
And, and just for that, I think that, uh, John and Donnie can speak to that, I know that that, a lot of items are on the, we're auctioning that, we'll, we'll touch a little bit more on this at the end of the meeting when, when we wrap up, but, um, we are auctioning a bunch of the, the junk pile off.
There, there's a lot down there.
It's slowly going, Dee, I promise.
So things are disappearing, like some of that cute playground equipment and stuff is just kind of grown legs and walked off. No, it's just grown legs and walked off.
Oh, I don't know nothing about that.
Because it's not fenced.
Okay, anything else? All right, nothing else, and, uh, you've got your, your things there.
Okay, my one item, I got it.
Potentially two, I guess, right?
Would it be, would it be a budgetary item if we were looking at putting that road out, um, on the west side of, where Amy could take the kids out?
Yeah, if we put like a cart path, like we have similarly.
Make a, like a, something, a bike path, where they could pull off, so that, that could be an item that we put on there. Um, and I know we have discussed about maybe like some sort of a community fishing pond. Wenamaka has that one they just put in over there, that would be great here, I mean, it's just, there's a large portion of that and, and, uh, I just think if you had that, maybe, uh, 4H could maybe work with that, you know, and kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, just, I think it'd be a great idea, so I don't know what it looks like, but maybe we could discuss that as well?
Corey, do you have it?
Don't know.
It's on Reinhardt Lane, I believe.
Oh, it's in Wenamaka's Reinhardt Lane here, I don't know if we could make, because that's what-
In one of the major flood areas that's already destined to flood?
I think I'm about, I'm about the only guy that has a fishing pond, so.
That's what Wenamaka did, is they, they came off the river and built their little pond, but yeah, just, it's an idea, it's-
It's a good idea, yeah. Kingston has one, it's busy all the time.
Is it?
Yeah, there's always people stopping there and playing, and they have a little fish food thing, and, and people put their quarters in and feed the fish and-
It's nice.
Yeah, it is.
All right, so, nothing more, we'll move on. Uh, thirteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the final, uh, sorry, uh, for discussion of possible action to set the dates for the budget workshop meeting.
So usually we do it in March, and we try to avoid the same week as commission meetings, but this year, the off week is the eighteenth, and that is the school's spring break, so I would suggest we don't do it on that week.
So which week's the spring break?
The week of the eighteenth.
Well, spring break's that, okay.
March eighteenth through the twenty-first is spring break for the schools.
Okay, well, I'm definitely not available on the seventh. Um, and there could be some other dates that I might, I just, I don't know quite yet, so we'll just have to pick it.
We can do the eleventh and twelfth, the twelfth, thirteenth, or we can go to the last week of March and do it the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, or twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Because our main meeting's the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Um. Hmm, how's the eleventh and twelfth working? March eleventh and twelfth, that work for everybody here?
I'm open on most days.
Here?
I'm good, mostly, kinda.
Mike, does March eleventh and twelfth work for you?
I, I don't have a calendar with me, but it would, I know, work wise, cause I don't have it down in March. I have it in February, so.
Yeah, so it's.
As of right now, potentially, I can say yes.
Yes, the second week in March and it's that Monday, Tuesday. Alright.
That I'll have to check when I get back. I mean, you can schedule it, but like I said, that's, and that's all day?
Yeah, typically they are, yeah.
The first day for sure, yeah.
Alright, thanks, Mike. Alright, we'll just try to set it for the eleventh and the twelfth of March.
Okay.
Alright, so thanks, Lagan.
Thank you.
Thirteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the final rail design proposal in an amount not to exceed a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
What is that?
So this is the, uh, the rail design that we have out here for our rail park. Um, a couple of things and the, and the reason this is on here and, and I'm hoping that you guys will approve it is because you have to have, for UP or BNS Railroad. To approve a connection to their track, you have to have a business that's coming to town to connect to that. Right now with Badamont Hydro and uh. That go, potentially going out there, we have a business that we can kinda use as, as leverage to attach to their tracks. And if that business were to fail, at least we would have a track connected out there to our rail park. And right now is what it's standard, taking about two years to get that connection. So a lot of businesses, when they knock on your door. They say, hey, do you have a rail spur? And we say, no. But we can get one in two years. They go, yeah, we're moving somewhere else. But if we said, yes, we have one, even if Badamont Hydro and then were to, if that was not to come to fruition. Um, this would give us the gate to get in and have that spur put in and um, turnkey ready for any other business that were to come to town.
Well, honestly, it's something too, we're gonna need, I mean, cause it's the vetting of Hydro, if it, if it shakes out, good. I mean, they're gonna need this, right?
Correct.
So.
But I don't want, I don't want to give the false impression that this is for them.
Right.
And for them only, right? Because the, the potential for that to fail is there. Um, we're hoping it succeeds, but it, it is there, so.
But we have the, the steps in place for the next business wants to come in.
Right, it's potential for future development.
Yep.
And more than one person can use a rail spur.
Correct.
Um, as you already know, this is gonna be quick. That is, if they do that development, it'll happen quickly. Um, consequently, in their proposal, I don't see anything saying, you know, you can pull out in a hurry. Um, it's basically gonna be a fun deal, so be, be aware of that.
Okay.
And what are they doing? I'm sorry, you need to get me up to speed on it. Is Hydro a company?
Oh, they are, uh, they're a, well, it's two facilities. So they're a hydrogen plant that produces hydrogen and also another plant that takes waste and um, if anybody can help me on this.
Takes it down to carbon, it's cause they use that pure carbon farm to make the hydrogen energy, which is stored as methane, not as hydrogen. Cause that was one of the safety concerns, so that's, that's what it is. If they shake out all the questions we have, then I, I think it's gonna be a really good thing for the community.
So they'll transport waste from like the Reno dumps and stuff out here and, and it'll be?
Yep.
Their plan is to bring it by rail all the way from California. Um, eating everything and it sounds to me like the only thing that really is not used is leather goods. Um, and everything else pretty much goes through their system and, and is either recycled or turned into the carbon that then is later stored, so.
And how much are we making up of it?
We haven't really gotten to all that yet.
Tax revenue.
Tax revenue.
Numbers are dropping, yeah, that, that they're, they're investing.
And how many employees?
Well, the, the talk right now, um, is roughly about a hundred employees. And they will, uh, it'll be about a billion dollars worth of investment for them to, to put both the facilities in. Um, and that's kinda what the rough, rough talk is right now, but we have yet to see the.
Right, the actual numbers. And who else are they talking to?
I think we're the only one that I'm aware of that has the, that has the capacity and the rail, the flat ground to, to pull off as many trains as they need.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, are you have a motion?
I would say the competition's probably Windover.
Uh, Mike, didn't hear that, what was that?
I, I would say to answer that, I would say the, I'm sure, I'm sure there's been discussion with Windover too. I thought they said in the early meetings. Cause of the rail access to.
Yeah, Windover would have.
I, the Windover would, the, the, Windover may be the competition. I, I have not heard that, maybe I missed that, but um, they may be. I'll have to get a hold of Shav and Mud and find out about that.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Mike. Uh, no more questions? I'll hear, uh, motion?
Alright, I'll make the motion that we approved that final rail design proposal in the amount not to exceed a hundred, one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Let's see, if you have a motion in a second, I'll interfere, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, uh, Mike, fourteen, we've already done, we'll move into fifteen, correspondence, uh, reports, futures, and items.
So a couple of things, um, that I want the commission to know, we submitted our plan for turn lanes to be. Put in, in place here for the potential new fire, um, department. And also, we included in that because it's a, there's a lot of other steps that take place to, you have to do traffic studies and you have to do some other things. Um, so we also included the turn, adding a turn lane out there that, and I don't know your street, Ms. Kathy.
I think that's twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth Street to add a turn lane there as well, um, in that same request. So we're working on them two turn lanes to come along with three oh five for safety. Um, just wanted you guys to be aware of that. And then also on, since we touched on the surplus. Um, some of the items down in Austin just aren't getting bids, the old rollers, um, some of the old equipment just are not getting bids on the surplus sale. But we are trying to surplus and what we can't surplus, um, we're gonna bring in and, and try to scrap.
I don't, I didn't even know we were surplusing. Yeah, see, and so we need, that's what I'm saying, we need better communication on our end of the county.
And we, and we're putting it in the newsletter, we're doing the, the same thing, but we gotta figure out how to, you know, how to engage people and I'm not sure exactly how else to do that.
That's what I'm saying. We need to do something, I don't know if it's, because we have no clue that they were surplusing.
Yeah, we, we had agenda, yeah, we were agenda, I had some of the special.
I, and I'm sorry, you know, I watch the, I, I pay attention some, but then I get wrapped up in other stuff and, um.
The fire is posted at the courthouse down that, too, I'm pretty sure.
Well, yeah, okay. Have you seen our bulletin board?
Yeah, there's a lot on there.
And Dee, I know when I'm posting on the county Facebook, I know that Gell and Austin and Kingston are picking it up and trying to share what they can.
Right, we need to get Michelle to, uh, she's gonna hate me for this. To actually start working on promoting more of the things that are going on, like the survey and the, and that stuff, you know? She's, that's what she's there for as a county employee, to help keep the community aware of what's going on. Austin has two really good Facebook pages that maybe should be starting to be posted on. The fire department one is really active. And then when I worked for the chamber, we had a really good Austin, Nevada Facebook page. And most of the community was very active on it. The chamber doesn't use it much anymore. Maybe I could get Miranda to let me have access to it again.
Yeah, and we've shipped it to, to all of them. They're welcome to, you know, we, we encourage the posting and the spreading the word, but.
It just, there's a lot of apathy. We just need to get them a little more motivated. I, I'm sorry, there's a lot of apathy.
Uh, question, do we have a Love's truck stop looking to come to town? I've gotten hit several times from community members saying, we have a Love's coming in.
Is it, is it Love's? I'm not exactly sure of the name. Is it? I, I don't know that it's a Love, so I don't wanna put a name on it, but yes, we do have a truck stop that is, is potentially coming to town right next door to the sheriff's office. Um, and that, that'll be back before you guys too. You know, it's a, it's another item the, the planning commission passes and then is ratified by the commission.
I just heard when I said, well, unfortunately, I, I don't know of anything of, of what you speak, so it's, so Sean?
So the Love's was looking at property out there, but I think they moved to Wells, or not Wells, uh, Carlin's.
Oh, okay.
So, but I don't know if that fell through or not. If that does fall through, I think they're gonna come back here and look here too, so.
Yeah, cause my concern was, I know it's zoned for it because we had looked at the property on the other side and we were talking about traffic studies, but we. When we're putting our fire hole there, we have our sheriffs here, we have our schools here, and then we talk about putting another truck stop here, I'm like, man.
Well, Love's is looking at the other exit, the closer to the Indian Colony.
Oh, got you, okay.
So, but like I said, they moved to Carlin, but that falls through, I think they're gonna come back here and look.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is separate of the one that's next door here. So there's, the one next door here is still progressing forward. It is not of what Sean is speaking of, so it's, that one is progressing, so.
Years ago, when I was on the leaderboard, there was an Indian casino group that was looking at putting in a huge facility out there on the edge of the, at the other, what happened to that or?
I think it was.
Their funding fell through?
Alright, so, uh, any future agenda items that you'd like to see on it? We have any from this agenda that we need to, we need to put the garbage, uh, coordinates on there?
Where are we on the realignment project?
There's three hundred and fifty unpaid tax residents in Austin currently. Yeah, actually, actually, that is a, that is a true statement. Um, the majority of them are like the huge resource and, uh, and, um, some of them, so them will come clean when. You know, when we sign all the, all the maps, but it is right on the tail end. As soon as people's property taxes are right, there's gonna be some maps signed. I think that, um, when the snow clears this spring, the, the attorneys are gonna be walking door to door, getting signatures. Um, so it's.
We got the water issue all straightened out?
Are you talking the lawsuit?
No, that's been ongoing forever.
Yes, I was gonna say, that's not straightened out.
Never end. Um, the, at one point in time, they had to stop doing something because estate water was trying to come in and.
Oh, yes, that's all worked out for the subdivision and the, yes, that is all worked out.
Okay, alright.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Martinez did a, you know, and the, and the attorneys down there, Brian Hardy and them, did a really good job at. Working that out with state water and so we didn't have to make a subdivision out of that, so.
Okay, good.
Kathy, did you wanna report from Donnie on?
Oh, yes, question actually.
Yep.
Are you on the spot? And the only reason I remember it is the, the snow.
That's why I was waiting for you, bro.
Because, uh, remember I'd asked last year, as far as the spraying and the stuff that we put down ahead of time before the storms, where are we with?
We just got it going today and so I know the state puts it down before the storms, but we're gonna, on the ice, it works on ice too, so.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Yep, so we're gonna start spraying today and then hopefully like before next storm, we'll, we'll freeze, freeze spray.
Okay, very good. Cause you asked Saturday, we're supposed to start another one, but thank you.
Yeah, um, we would've been on it, but we tried a different sprayer, some they didn't work for us, so we had to build this bar.
I don't think anybody thought we were gonna get, cause when they were saying on the news, they said that was a squall, that, or type of storm that they did not foresee, so I don't think any.
We was watching the weather and it went from six inches down to a lot of ice and then we ended up getting a, so.
Very good, thank you, that's all I know, thank you.
Okay, any more correspondence, uh, reports or future agenda items? Okay, we'll move into, uh, public comment for non-agenda items only, is there public comment? No public comment? I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, I'll interfere, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Muted.
Thanks, Mike.